Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is Wednesday, September 13th at 3:00 in the afternoon. I'd like to call the Tallahassee City Commission meeting to order. It's great to see everybody. Thank you for joining us today. To provide the invocation today, it is my honor and privilege to introduce Pastor Gerald Mandrell of Life Changers Church of God and Christ, who is here today. Pastor Mandrell, if you will please join us for the invocation, and ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please stand.
Heavenly Father, we bless you and we praise your name today. We thank you for your goodness and for your kindness that you have shown towards us. You've allowed us to live, to see another day, and we bless you. And we thank you even yet for this commission and for the mayor, as well as for every commissioner and every leader that is in this room. And God, we pray your continued favor upon them. Fill them with wisdom, fill them with grace, and fill them with unity, God, so that they will lead our community to a greater place. And we just thank you. We thank you for the peace and harmony that you have given to us, and we just thank you for the excellence of the city of Tallahassee. So God, we pray your blessing and favor be upon our gathering, and that you will keep us and sustain us in all that we do and all that we say. And we give your name praise, honor, and glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Mandrell, it's great to see you. And Pastor Mandrell, it's great to see you. Thank you for joining us today to start our meeting off right.
And Mayor, I'd like to announce that I am a proud honorary sister girl.
There you go. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're going to have a great meeting today. We've got a regular scheduled meeting. We also have, obviously, the public hearing tonight at 6:00. I believe we'll be able to get through all the regular business, take public comment, take a break, come back for public hearing, take any other public comment that might be there, and wrap up the meeting in good fashion. Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
No, sir.
Okay. Y'all would like to join me for the proclamations? Mm-hmm. Ladies and gentlemen, we have three wonderful proclamations today. First and foremost, as my colleagues are joining me down here, I would like to invite Joshua White, Oxford House. Come join me, please, you and your team. That'd be great. And we certainly do appreciate you being here today. For National Recovery Month, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation: Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental health and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation; and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally; and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends, people with mental and substance use disorders, to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services; and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the Oxford House Network in Florida invite all residents of Tallahassee to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the month of September as National Recovery Month. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you, signed with my signature, dated September 13th, 2023. Joshua, it's my pleasure to present you with this proclamation and invite you to say a few words as well. Please, podium is yours.
Hey, everybody. My name is Josh, and I am a person in recovery. I haven't felt the need to take a drink or a drug since June 28th, 2019. I'm here with Danielle. I can't pronounce her last name. She is our chapter chair. We have, I'm with Oxford House, I'm the outreach coordinator here. We have 10 houses about to open, an 11th house for women with children. Recovery Month, recovery is every day. I'm willing to bet just about everybody, if not everyone, in this room has been touched by addiction, friend, family, coworker. And it does take a village. It takes all of us working together. We have a crisis. We have an opiate crisis. And we are working with Oxford House to provide safe, supportive recovery housing for people. We need to do more. We have now 146 houses around the state of Florida, over 3,600 houses nationwide. Recovery works, and the Oxford House model has an 87% success rate for people who stay an average of eight months or longer. So thank you, Mayor Daley, and members of the commission for letting us come here. Danny didn't think I could only speak for three minutes, but we're able to do that. Thank you very much.
How about a picture? Let's get a picture. I would like to invite Mr. Matt Guzzi and all of our friends of 2-1-1 of the Big Ben to please come join us now for our next presentation. And Matt, on a personal note, welcome back to Tallahassee. We are so glad that you are here in your new role. Come on down, everybody. Y'all do amazing work. We are so thrilled to have you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Regarding National Suicide Prevention Month, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation: Whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention Month, the 2-1-1 Big Ben National Suicide Prevention Month proclamation was created to raise the visibility of the mental health and suicide prevention services available in our community. The goal is to encourage conversation about mental health, suicide warning signs, and to empower people with prevention resources. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 to 14 and 25 to 34 in the United States. And whereas more than 48,000 people died by suicide across the United States each year, with an average of 132 suicides completed daily. And whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas the city of Tallahassee publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas 2-1-1 of the Big Ben serves on the front lines of a crisis that needs this community's full attention, as stigma regarding suicide and mental health issues is far too prevalent. And whereas I encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health, warning signs for suicide, and actions we can all take to take care of ourselves and others in our community. Now therefore, I, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the month of September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you, signed with my signature, dated September 13th, 2023. Matt Guzzi, thank you so much, and our good friends at 2-1-1 Big Ben for coming to receive this proclamation, and the podium is yours. We really appreciate this. I am new to this organization, less than 30 days, so I'm still learning a lot, but I am proud to be part of an organization that I know has such a massive impact on the communities we serve. While we're here to talk about suicide prevention, many of the issues that our community members face, we can help them. They can call us, and we can connect them with the services in the community that can meet their needs. But related to this particular issue, I'd like to have Stephen Sardellis, who's our director of hotline coordinators, whose staff work this issue every day, to share a little bit about what goes on at 2-1-1 and how we're helping. Stephen?
So I like to try to go off the top of my head, but I figured I'd play it safe tonight. So I would also just like to say thank you on behalf of the agency and as an individual to both the commission and to everybody here for giving us this time and space. So 2-1-1 Big Ben does do a lot for our community. We encounter people in crisis on the daily. One of our guiding philosophies is that nobody should have to go through crisis alone. We offer human connection and understanding to people who are completely and otherwise isolated in their lives. We connect to those who have suffered for so long that suicide is seen as the only means to end life's problems. So 2-1-1 Big Ben can help these kinds of people. In a given year, we can say we helped at least 25 people who have initiated a suicide plan. We literally help play a role in saving lives, preventing death. If we factor in how many conversations we have and how many people we help de-escalate from acute crisis, then we can confidently say we helped in a year hundreds of people choose to stay alive intentionally. We help people choose to stay alive. So by giving us this space today, the city commission is taking one of the many possible actions to help spread awareness on the problem of suicide, and we are very appreciative. You're also enabling us to share our message. So if you are or know somebody who is struggling with thoughts of suicide, there are dozens of strangers in town right now who want to be there for you in a time of crisis. If you're local, you can reach us by dialing 2-1-1. And if you don't have a local area code in your cell phone, you can dial 988 to reach a 24/7 crisis line, and you can dial 2-1-1, okay? And y'all, so we're here for Suicide Awareness Month. We do that on top of all of the other matters that we address in a given conversation, whether that be homelessness, basic needs, food insecurity, substance use issues. We have a lot of range. So thank you again to everybody for your time and attention.
Come on up, John Baker. Bring your team up with you. Neighborhood Affairs. Oh, let me tell you, I love working with y'all each and every day. You make Tallahassee so special. Our neighborhoods are so wonderful. Thank you so much. Absolutely. What an honor to be able to present this proclamation to you. Thank you all so much for all the great work. Regarding National Good Neighbor Day, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation: Whereas research shows that knowing your neighbors helps to create a neighborhood that is safer, cleaner, and increased quality of life; and whereas neighborliness and acts of neighborhoodism lend to greater understandings among neighbors and greater tolerance during times of crisis and misunderstandings; and whereas neighborhood and homeowners associations provide the most foundational means for residents to get involved in the civic life of their community and to know their neighbors; and whereas the city supports the creation of neighborhood and homeowners associations and has provided staff and other resources to support and facilitate their development; and whereas the city annually recognizes and celebrates the contributions of its citizens, neighborhood associations, and homeowners associations in enriching the lives of their neighbors through the city's Neighborhood Awards Program; and whereas the city's Neighborhood of the Year Award recognizes the outstanding contributions of one of its exemplary residents who has gone beyond and above in demonstrating the spirit of neighborliness through acts of kindness and compassion; and whereas residents that have participated in the city's Neighborhood Leadership Academy have become outstanding ambassadors for the city, helping to connect their neighbors to vital services and programs; and whereas neighborhood leaders faithfully provide voluntary services to enhance their community and to help their neighbors; and whereas the city has supported its neighbors through innovative programming addressing neighborhood safety, neighborhood planning, neighborhood recognition, neighborhood leadership, and many more; and whereas developing relationships with our neighbors can help us overcome loneliness, depression, and isolation; and whereas being a good neighbor fosters vibrant communities, and we know to have good neighbors, you must first be a good neighbor yourself. Now therefore, I, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize September 28th as National Good Neighbor Day and call upon the neighborhood and homeowners associations and residents to join each other in this observance. Be it further resolved that residents, neighborhood, and homeowners associations host and engage activities and events that promote National Good Neighbor Day and extend such celebrations through October 4th. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you, signed with my signature, dated today, September 13th, 2023. I cannot think of a more fitting group of individuals to present this to than our own Neighborhood Affairs and John Baker, our leader.
I only have a book. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, Mr. Manager, thank you for once again recognizing the importance that neighborliness plays in building a healthy community. Our recent hurricane put on display the importance of neighborliness here throughout our community, and as the Neighborhood Affairs Office, we've heard from residents from all sides of this community thanking line men and others, first responders, who helped to recover our city. We know that our community has many challenges, but we are guided by evil will overcome good and hope will conquer the spear, light will conquer darkness. This year, to recognize neighborliness, we will host the city's Neighborhood Awards Program in September 28th at the Park View Room at Cascade. And here, as the mayor read in the proclamation, we will recognize neighbors who have gone over and beyond helping neighbors or making the community where they live a better place. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commission. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for the effort to serve our community. Mr. Mayor, Anorani is here with us, and she's a part of the leadership of Providence, one of our neighborhood, and she would like to say a few words on neighborliness.
Please.
Thank you. As a member of the Providence Neighborhood Leadership, we pride ourselves in being good neighbors. And as the mayor said, it's about being a good neighbor yourself, making sure that your yard is good and that you are making sure that things are clean around you. We also reach out to each other to make sure that everyone's okay. So when times of, you know, the hurricane or even during COVID, we were all reaching out to each other to support each other. And we also want to thank Neighborhood Affairs for providing resources at that time, especially when we need it. So we appreciate you all in supporting us, being good neighbors to each other.
I'd like to recognize Curtis Richardson for a special recognition as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize that we don't have anything formal to recognize our employees, and particularly two individuals, but just earlier this afternoon at the United Way of the Big Ben's community luncheon, there were a number of individuals and organizations that were recognized for their support of the United Way of the Big Ben and its fundraising campaign. And of course, as we all know, those resources go to provide programs and services for the individuals that the United Way serves in, I think it's eight counties in the Big Ben area. But, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, I can tell you, as you've heard this afternoon time and time again, our employees, the leadership of the city of Tallahassee demonstrates how exemplary they are, and certainly are outstanding in the services and programs that are provided to the residents and visitors of the city of Tallahassee. And so in that regard, then, we had several individuals, or a couple of individuals, two individuals that were recognized by the United Way for their leadership in the city's fundraising campaign for 2023. And also, the city itself, the city of Tallahassee, was recognized for the amount of money that was raised by our employees during that campaign to support, of course, the United Way of the Big Ben. And so I wanted to indicate the awards and then recognize those two individuals that led our campaign, and we want to thank them for the work that they did, but also to thank all of the citizens, or citizens, the employees of the city of Tallahassee for making the sacrifice to contribute to our fundraising campaign and make the city of Tallahassee recognized as one of the leaders in that area. So the Cornerstone Award was awarded to the city of Tallahassee, and that was for top campaign solicitations and donations anywhere from $100,000 to $250,000. I don't have the exact amount that we raised, and Angel, maybe you or DC Holmes can give us that. But the city of Tallahassee was also recognized for the most creative campaign. And then lastly, our two campaign coordinators were recognized as Campaign Coordinators of the Year, and that's Angel Carlton. I understand Angel is here. Angel, come on up.
Come on up.
And co-chairperson, deputy chief, Maurice Holmes. And so we want to congratulate them. Yeah, and they're carrying the hardware. So I want Angela, Angel, if you would, I'm sorry, to give us a few words of comments.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, can I sit these here?
Yes.
Well, good afternoon. And this was so off the press. We really just came from this event, and I appreciate Commissioner Richardson recognizing us. I would first like to thank deputy city manager Barbara, along with the city manager, for pushing us to do this campaign. I'm nervous here, but it's all good because we won. We got what we needed. I said we needed an award, we got an award, and that's what we did. I also would like to thank our appointed officials, our leadership team, and more importantly, our employees. Without everyone's help, we would not have made it. Our theme for this year was, and help me out, deputy chief Holmes, it was, "Come on, come on, come on." If you forgot, community impact equals community effort and equals living united. And we did that. We did that. Yes, you did come up with it. And so I would like to say, to get everything on record, is that we did raise over $100,000. And so we had not reached that goal in some years. We had limited time, but guess what? We all pulled together and we did what the city do best, and that's come up, achieve, and do what we're supposed to do. So I appreciate everyone for being a part. I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate my co-United Way campaign chair. And I don't know if you want to say a few words, because I've already said everything that needed to be said, but...
Try to follow that, DC.
I cannot follow it. She said everything, but Team Tallahassee, we did this together. You know, you deserve a hand, everyone that's employees of City of Tallahassee. We did this together. So we got the accolades, but as a team, it's ours.
There we go. Grab your hardware. Let's grab a picture real quick. time?
No, sir.
Okay. We have appearances by other governmental entities. At this time, I would like to adjourn the Tallahassee City Commission meeting, and I would like to call and convene the Pension Plan Board of Trustees. I know that trustee Stiefel is with us as well. There he is. Come join us.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, man.
Okay, we are on item number 7.02, and I'm just going to turn it over to the treasurer clerk, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. We just have the one item for action tonight. Members of the board, we retain an actuarial services firm to provide services to the city's pension plan. Those services include providing the actuarial evaluation that identifies our funding ratio, our required pension contributions, so very technical, but also very important function. I do need to note that the agenda item mistakenly identified Buck Consultants as our current actuary. Buck has provided services previously, but currently Gabriel Roder Smith &amp; Company is our current actuary. And because Gabriel Roder and Smith, or GRS, has a contract that's set to expire at the end of this month, we issued a request for proposal, and following that competitive process, we got a half dozen good responses, but the evaluation committee ranked GRS again number one. And so this item recommends your approval and authorization to allow my office to negotiate and execute a contract with GRS. It would be a five-year contract with two one-year extensions. So that's the item before you.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, we are up for discussion.
Move option number one is recommended by staff.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson moves the staff recommendation, option number one, seconded by Commissioner Porter and the mayor pro tem. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and it passes 6-0. Do we have any other business to come before the pension board at this time?
No, sir.
I just want to, one more time, say thank you, Steve, for serving on this board and all that hard work that we just did. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other business before the pension board, I adjourn the pension board. I'd like to call the Tallahassee City Commission meeting back to order. We are on the consent agenda. Give y'all a second. Okay, Mr. Manager, have any items been pulled off the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on any of the agenda items that would require us to take it off the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have two speakers, both of them on item 8.02.
Okay. So colleagues, what we're going to do is take up the consent agenda, which will include 8.01, 8.03, and 8.04. And once we deal with the consent agenda, I will come back to 8.02. Any questions? Okay. Any...
Move acceptance of the items that you've just named.
Okay, it's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem. It's been seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We are now on item 8.02. Mr. Manager, will you please introduce the item?
Yes, sir, I will. This item involves laundry, dry cleaning, and alterations services for our police and fire uniforms. These services were solicited via invitation for bid or an IFB, and it is recommended to award the contract to Carvers Discount Cleaners.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, we have public comment on this item?
Yes, sir, we do. We will hear from Tony Trustee and then Stanley Sims. As our first speaker comes to the microphone right there in the middle of the room, I will let him and other speakers know that you'll have three minutes for comments. The light in front of the mayor and mayor pro tem will be green, and then go to yellow and red as your time winds down. I'll also give you a heads up at two and a half minutes.
Excellent. Thanks for joining us. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
The name is Tony Trustee. I'm the owner and operator of Shamrock Cleaners in Tallahassee, Florida.
You have three minutes. Thank you.
So, I'm here to discuss the bid that I participated in with the city. I'm the owner and operator of Shamrock Cleaners. Please note that I was the lowest, and still am the lowest bidder on this project by over $45,000. I was contacted in April by the procurement person because they had a question. The solicitation required multiple locations. I emailed that team, that staff member, to show that we had the multiple locations, and we met all requirements for the bid. However, we were not awarded the bid, and I was here to ask if I met all of the requirements and was the lowest bidder by over $45,000, why I potentially did not receive the award.
Okay. Done with your comment? Excellent. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Let me ask our procurement director, Veronica McCracken, to come forward. She can give the details. There were three bids. The bid from Shamrock was deemed non-responsive. There's some details of that. Ms. McCracken can share that information.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, in the case of Shamrock Cleaners, they were disqualified because they did not meet the bid requirements. The requirements had two locations that were necessary. They did put forth two locations. We asked a clarifying question whether the two locations were viable or operable. We got a response back that, no, the location they identified was not viable. He requested to add a different location. Now, in the world of procurement, we don't allow people to modify their proposals, except for instances what it's called a minor irregularity. In this particular instance, it was deemed that this was not a minor irregularity. Why he didn't put forth the original or operational facilities at the time, I don't know, but it was not in good stead to allow that amendment to happen. And that's where we ended up deeming them disqualifying for not meeting the two-location requirement. He was allowed to protest that. We noted on the intent to award that he was not responsive, and we identified the reason why. We noted that it did not meet the contract and bid requirements. So, he certainly had the opportunity to protest, but failed to do so. And that should have been the proper forum, from my perspective, in which he could have raised his concerns about this particular issue.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Was that process explained to the owner, the protest process?
It's in our, it's in the bid itself. We do not, you know, no, I don't call each one and ask them, but it's outlined in the solicitation, Section 1.9 standard, what the protest rights are and what that standard is.
Mr. Mayor? Mayor Pro Tem?
What was it that made the second location not viable? What's the definition of viable?
It just wasn't operating, and I apologize. I'll have to get you his exact response. It wasn't viable, so I don't know that it was an operable, that it was in operation, and that's why he put forth a different location.
So, and by the way, Ms. McCracken, you do a wonderful job, and I certainly do appreciate it, and I know how difficult procurement can be. My interest is, well, first of all, not even including Shamrock. I mean, I would imagine that most, if not all, I'm trying to think, in the Tallahassee-Layon County area, dry cleaning businesses are going to be locally owned and operated, right? We don't have any national chains.
Right.
And when we wrote the standards, and I'm assuming that this has been the standard for quite some time with the RFP, that you have to have two or more operable locations, when really, we live in a day and age where all the businesses have some type of pickup and drop-off, where they could actually go to the department. I mean, I guess the question is, number one, how many mom-and-pop-owned dry cleaners are automatically knocked out because they only have one brick-and-mortar facility? And number two, do we take into consideration drop-off and pickup? I'm thinking, for instance, for the police department, instead of having everybody in the police department having to physically go to one of the two locations or more to drop off, if the arrangement is that the dry cleaner comes to the police station and does one big pickup on a daily basis, is this all taken into consideration? I'm just worried that we're, that people are being excluded from the process to begin with just because they don't have two or more locations in their business.
Understood, and, you know, I can't speak for the, for TPD from that perspective. I think it was their preference that there were multiple locations, but a minimum of at least two. And so, for them, that is what they were looking for, two locations for drop-off. And that was what the standard was. But we can certainly something that we can take into consideration in the future, and is probably something more that's related to the department and how they want to operate from that perspective.
And we only had three responses to the RFP?
Yes.
Do we know how many dry cleaning businesses are in Tallahassee?
I don't know the answer to that one. Sorry, but we can find out.
Sure. No more than three.
Yeah. Madam Attorney, I, you know, I don't think I've ever done this as mayor on this board. I'm interested in knowing what our options are. And by the way, has nothing to do with the procurement office. You followed the procurement process to the T. You did everything that you're supposed to do. I just think that maybe we need to update, in this particular industry, the language, taking into consideration that probably the most effective service is going to be some type of drop-off and pickup on behalf of the vendor. But also, I'm concerned about the exclusion, because this industry is mom-and-pop, and a lot of them probably don't have two or more, and we probably excluded everyone. At this point, what is the decision before the Board? We either accept the recommendation, or do we have to scrap the bids in the process and start over? And if the interest of the Board, I'm sorry, if the interest of the Board was to go back and, shall we say, update the language, to then go back out to RFP to see if we can catch a wider net to include other mom-and-pop stores here in... Am I making sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, what options do we have?
So, the most appropriate way to handle it, if this Commission believed that they were not prepared to accept the bid, would be to rebid matters, so that there can be a fair playing field for all parties.
Does it have to be rebid under the same language of RFP? Or can we give staff the opportunity to update the language?
You can start over as you think appropriate.
Okay. All right, I'll open it up for discussion. Commissioner Matlin and Diane Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, yeah, I mean, I think my questions were similar, because I saw option two, reject the bid award. Says it's not anticipated that better pricing will be obtained, but it seems like there is a potential to save nearly $50,000 by going with a different vendor. So, I guess my questions are along the same lines as yours. Is there an opportunity here to get a better offer and still deliver the same amount of service? It appear there may be, and, Mr. Manager, you may be able to speak to that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think probably for context, because I hear two things, and certainly it's prerogative of the Commission to reject this and rebid it, and you can rebid it, and the Department tends to be the ones scoping what their needs are. I hear the desire of the Commission maybe to do something different, but I think we need to take into account what the Department's needs are. If you don't mind, if we could hear what that is. Obviously, we could rebid it simply in its current form, or if there's a desire of the Commission to do something different, we'll do that. But Chief, if you'll share with us kind of the logistics of it, obviously, you're the user of the services.
Sure. Thank you for that, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you. We have, obviously, a very large amount of people that have very differing times that they're going to need this cleaning, so multiple drop-off points is, are, multiple drop-off points are essential to us. So, the minimum of two, we would like to have four or five, obviously, to make it more convenient for our officers, but to have them come to one central point, try to, the logistics of that is not feasible. It's not something that would work for our agency, our size, the amount of clothes that go through the dry cleaners. So, you know, we, we need multiple drop-off points, and we need those points to be able to have a storefront where we can actually go in, you know, sign the clothes in, pick up the clothes, from those locations.
Thank you, Chief. And, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make sure we shared that. I thought that would be the answer, and if you don't mind, if I can ask Ms. McCracken, do you have the flexibility to simply pick a different bidder? This isn't done an RFP, it's a bid.
Got it. Sorry.
So, you do have three individuals or three companies that bid on this. It was picked on price of the response, those deemed responsive. I think we did have subsequent information provided, but it was beyond the timeframe. And, Ms. McCracken, does the Commission have the ability to pick from a different, from that same list of three from the bids that we have?
You certainly can have that option. I do want to make a point of clarification. We did ask Shamrock, and I want to quote what their response was as it relates to, "Can you please confirm that there's currently a physical location at this address, 336 East College Avenue, where employees will be able to drop off and pick up their clothing?" The response, "336 East College Avenue is no longer an active, an active pickup and drop-off location." All right, so I'm just trying to make that point clear from a process point of view. I think that certainly to the city attorneys, you can reject and give us guidance based on what you've heard here about what you would like to change, or if you just want us to spit it back out and give folks another opportunity and take another bite at that.
Okay. I'm, I tell you what my interest is. I'm hesitant... Oh, Commissioner Williams-Cox, I called on you. I'm sorry about that, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, sir. Thank you. No problem. I know we all get very, very passionate about this. I'm very passionate about this $40,000 difference here. You know, we're here, about to ask for some more money, and we got $40,000 opportunity right here, and I don't want to lose that or miss that. And I agree that, first of all, hats off to those who are still doing dry cleaning, because a lot of us are not doing it because of, you know, other environmental reasons and what have you. But to allow for a place where, you know, they can come by and pick it up, or do some type of drop point or what have you, I don't see why we, it has to be a brick-and-mortar, multiple locations. I know that one of these I have, I have used, or actually, I've used all three of them in through the years, and they do have a little storefront where you go in and drop your stuff. Obviously, somebody picks it up and takes it to the main place and do whatever and bring it back. But that could easily be done somewhere else. So, my, I think we need to update, we need to, you know, modernize the requirement to have more brick-and-mortar drop-off points. And, you know, Chief, what if they came to the department and picked them up? Had a day that they can come out of the department and pick them up? I'm just saying, I see you shaking your head, don't do that, but I'm saying, let's think out of the box. Let's be creative and not just be set on, we've got to go and drop them off somewhere. This $40,000 difference is really hitting me hard, and I want to, I want to figure out how we can capture that, how we can, we can get back in it. So, I am thinking, we might need to do a do-over, and let's see where it comes out with the do-over. And wherever it lands, it lands. I see Mr. Tony raising his hand, he wants to clarify. He's a businessman, he knows his model, he knows whatever, so I don't want to get into that back and forth, but, 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 Mr. Mayor...
Now, Mr. Tony, we are in Commission discussion, and so, I think we're going to figure out a direction here in just a second. I got Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Richardson when Mayor Pro Tem is finished.
I'm done. I'm done. I've rambled enough.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you. My one question was, you said that there was an attempt to alter the application. Was that for a separate drop-off location that's viable? Is that already in existence?
Yeah, he, and I'll continue. He then referred us to the website, a website that he had identifying two possible physical pickup locations. And so, he gave us the website address. So, to that point, like I said, modifying your bid after it's been submitted after the deadline, typically a hard no-no. I certainly understand the Commission's direction. If the Commission's direction is physical brick-and-mortar plus drop-off at, drop-off and pickup at this police station, if you want those two things combined as possible alternatives, I mean, we can certainly, whatever direction you give us, we just need to know that direction in terms of, if this is going to be rebid, what is it that is the desire of the Commission?
Okay, and I got Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move that we reject the bid and that it be rebid, because I, for two reasons. For the $45,000 savings to the city, but also because of it being a minority-owned business. And one of our priorities is to where we can support those businesses in our community. So, I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we reject the recommendation of staff and rebid the item.
I'll second the motion. Come to City Manager for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's clean. I don't think the number of locations is an issue. I think it's the, it's the, for technical reasons, it was not correct at the time the bid closed. I think there's been clarity of other locations. I don't think it's necessary. I hear the chief saying, logistically, they want physical locations. I think that exists. So, I think the motion that Commissioner Richardson just made is adequate. We rebid it as it is. I think it's very clear, and we're hopeful to get good bids again.
Okay. Sounds good. Is everyone clear on the motion that's on the table?
Yes.
Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of Commissioner Richardson's motion, seconded by myself...
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. There was one other speaker. I didn't know if you wanted to take that before you took the vote.
Oh, of course, Jim.
He's not in, he left the room.
Yeah, he's not in the room.
You can call him if he wants to come back.
If Mr. Sims is in the lobby and can hear my voice, would you please come back in if you'd like to comment on this particular item? It's okay. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. Mr. Mayor, I'm a little cheating tonight, because I got to get back home. Yesterday, my wife celebrated her birthday, who is a city employee, and I just want to say publicly to my wife, happy birthday. Also, Mr. Mayor, with the high volume of uptick in crime, just not only in our city, but all around this nation...
Mr. Sims, we're on the dry cleaning issue, on consent. Would you like to comment on this particular item?
Yes, I will. If I, may I reclaim the time that you just...
Please move forward. Please move forward.
May I reclaim my time?
You can have the extra two, three seconds, of course.
It was more than two or three seconds.
Please just move forward, and we'll hear your comments on the dry cleaning issue that's directly...
You'll hear my comments if you allow me to finish, so...
Please go forward.
With the uptake in crime in the communities all across the nation, not just in our city, but others, the presentations of our cops are important. When I look at crime in our community, crime does not happen on one side of the road, it's diversity. I believe that diversity should have a factor in keeping our cops' uniforms clean. I like to look good. I don't buy from expensive clothes stores, I go to those clearance racks. But this young man keeps my clothes looking dapper. He keeps them pressed. Now, I want to say this too, Mayor. Just because I'm pro-black, don't make me anti-white. My best friend white. Ask Jeremy Mearon, Jeremy Matlow, that's my friend. That's my friend. And Commissioner Richardson, I think it's right. When we see something that is flawed, let's redo it. And I'm so excited that we're going to get a chance to rebid this, so that this gentleman can have a fair opportunity to some of this in government... a fair opportunity to some of this in government money. We need it. How much more time I got?
30 seconds on the clock.
I'm running out of words. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So the motion on the table was made by Commissioner Richardson, signed it by myself, to scrap all bids and to begin the process anew. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We have no other items on the consent agenda. We have no introduction of ordinances this evening. We are on policy formation and direction. Item 12.02, Mr. Clerk. 12.01, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, at your last meeting, you voted to have bylaws for a charter review committee presented to you in October with members of said committee to be appointed 60 days later. And you also discussed several other items and asked for an agenda item to come back to today's meeting. So with the item before you, it asks for specific action on a few items that either seem obvious or seem to have consensus from your discussion at the last meeting. And then the fourth recommended action deals with items that require further direction. The first option, option one, is to approve a 10-member committee with two appointees by each member of the city commission. I believe that was, or I know that was discussed extensively, but it was not something that was acted on, and we would want to make that part of the bylaws that we bring back. Option two is to approve acceptance of applications through the city's boards and committee portal. You, as individuals, would not be required to make your selection from those applications, but it does open up that avenue for you to have interested applicants submit information. We would ask that, at the end of a process, as you're prepared to make an appointment, that we get an application from at least that one person, A, so that we have consistent information. We do that on all of our boards and committees, and B, so that we can make sure we check qualifications before the actual appointment itself. The third specific item would be for the bylaws to include a requirement that charter review committee members be registered electors of the city by October 1st of '23. That has been the case in prior charter reviews and makes sense then that the individuals participating on an item to come to the voters would themselves be voters. And so those three, I think, are fairly straightforward. And then the fourth item asks for some further direction on the charge or function of the committee. We, obviously, if we have bylaws, we'd like to identify what their function is, and we need that direction. There was also some discussion at the last city commission meeting about public input, and we would need further direction on exactly what that looks like, and then specifically whether, how that fits our timetable. Is that input that you want as a commission prior to appointing those committee members? Is it something that runs concurrently? And really, essentially, what is the will of the full body on those items?
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, sir, we do. On item 12.01, we have Stanley Sims. Bernard Stevens would be the second. Mr. Sims spoke, but looks to have left. I will keep talking for just a minute to make sure that he is not walking back in the doors. We'll go to Bernard Stevens.
Mr. Stevens? Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
All right. My name is Bernard Stevens. My address is 1700 North Monroe Street, Suite 11339. My brothers and my sisters, the city charter review committee will be no different from any other committee that the city has. None at all. The city charter already is clearly written in black and white. It still has to come back to you all. Why do we constantly get the citizens enraged in something, thinking they are a part of something, when they still have no say? They will never have a say, and you know that. And for me, since we're on it, Section 8 of your city charter, the form of government of this city of Tallahassee provided for under this act shall be known as the Commission Manager Plan, who shall be elected at large in a manner herein after provided. The commission shall constitute that the governing body with powers as herein after provided to pass ordinance, adopts regulations, and appoint a chief administrative officer to be known as the city manager and to exercise all other powers. Now, if I read that correctly, that means Mr. Gold runs our city. That means Mr. Gold is basically the bishop of this church. And if he's the bishop of the church, that makes each and every last one of you the pastors. And with that being said, we shouldn't have no problems going on since this is the Lord's house. That's what you said at your last meeting. The young man got up here and spoke so fine about you all like there's no problem in this government. And I am ashamed to know that. And the fact that it continues to be malfeasance, misappropriation of public funds, hm, that's a problem. And it's clearly discrimination, retaliation, a buddy-buddy system. The FBI was just here in September of 2015. They're coming back. I figure I should let you know that. I have already sent everything that I have over to them regarding this city. It is completely ridiculous that we sit around here and try to cover up and put a Band-Aid on the issues that are already present. So I advise you, as I already read, that you should get your houses in order, because it ain't right. Now, you can't be sitting around here telling the people how to act, and you still have problems inside your community. I'm appalled to say that. It doesn't take 20 years to fix an issue. If a toddler at two years old can understand right and wrong, that don't mean we're going to keep saying, oh, no, it's okay. Your PBA agreement, man, we got some issues. There is no equal opportunity in the city of Tallahassee.
You're at 30 seconds.
Thank you, sir. No equal opportunity at all. You terminate people who stand up to your evil doing. You don't give them an opportunity to fulfill the law that's required on paper. You pick and choose what you want to do. I'm telling you now, you better be true to what you put on paper, because what's going to happen? Everything that you said, everything that you put on there is coming back to get you. I digress my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That's the last person to speak in person. We do have one person virtually. There's, it's not clear. It says 1201, but the descriptor is what's on 1202. So Max Epstein is connected virtually. I believe he wants to speak on 1202, but I want to make sure of that before we...
Mr. Epstein, do you wish to speak on 12.01, the proposed Charter Review Commission, or item number 12.02?
12.02, please.
Thank you. I will get you on the next item. Hang in there. Any other public comment, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Williams-Cox, I will come to you first, since you were the one that brought this item before us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am satisfied with the recommended action that has, Jim has eloquently laid out, because those are the things that I think we pretty much have agreed to. So the fourth one is to provide direction concerning public input. I said at the last meeting that I would like to see, for the public input, I'd like to see some type of public survey that will go out to the public, that will come to us before the committee is formed. So it will, the public information, the public engagement would inform us so that we can inform the committee to help determine what are we looking at in the charter. We're, as far as I'm concerned, we're not trying to do a, you know, line-by-line change of the entire charter. Only those areas that we get interest in. So as far as I'm concerned, the recommended actions 1, 2, 1, 2, and 3, I'm in favor of. And for 4, I have provided some questions for review to Mr. Cook, what I would like to see on a survey. And I'm open to hearing what my colleagues have to say about how they want to move forward with public engagement.
All righty. Other comments?
That a motion, by the way.
Well, it is a motion, but I don't want to rush to that if somebody else has something to say. But I would certainly make the motion that we will accept the recommended actions 1, 2, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
There is a motion on the table for recommended actions 1, 2, 3, and 4, made by the Mayor Pro Tim. I will second that. Let's keep on with the conversation. Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarity, with the survey, we're looking for solicitation of ideas? Is that the, or is it? I'm trying to say, what will go, it's kind of on the website. Is it certain questions? What has been changed? I know we've heard recommendations from the community. We've heard recommendations previously from the Ethics Board. Are we looking for a survey for those to be submitted, and then we discuss? I'm just asking.
Is that for me?
Yeah, I'm just asking.
As far as I'm concerned, I've submitted the questions that I like to have asked.
Okay.
And I think each commissioner can do the same.
Okay. Yeah, no, that works for me. Yep.
So on point, real quick, is the idea that we open, say, like a portal on the website and allow people to come and submit specifically towards the CRC questions to be proposed for us to consider, or to have them contact us individually? I'm wide open.
Well, for me, what I had in mind was that we would submit, we would put a short survey out there, because for me, I don't do surveys that take a long time.
Sure.
And so that would give me some pointed answers and not a thesis of what I was going on, what I was wrong. But my questions are yes, no, because I just need some decisions where we need to point the committee. And so, Jim, you can share the questions that I've asked. So we can kind of get a flavor of...
Commissioner Porter, I'm coming to you in just a sec.
Of what I had in mind.
In the discussion with the Mayor Pro Tim, as she had indicated, her questions were sort of yes or no to make it short and to the point, to your point, Mayor, of how long and what format, and simply had identified a handful of questions. One, do you support keeping the number of the city commission seats at five? I know that issue of size of the commission was discussed at our last meeting. Do you support keeping citywide, that is, at-large, voting for city commission seats? Do you agree that city commissioners' duties require full-time attention, like Leon County Commissioner's duties? Do you support not conducting a primary election for city commission seats when there are only two candidates? And then the fifth question, do you support reviewing the city's charter at least every 10 years? And so each of those was posed in the form of a yes or no, so that a participant would answer yes or no rather than fill in a blank.
So my only concern, Commissioner Williams-Cox, well, let me go to Commissioner Porter. You've been waiting patiently.
It's okay.
Yeah. If we put a survey out there like that and give somebody the opportunity to manipulate the answers and vote multiple, multiple times so that they will automatically answer a question per se, I'd see where you're going. I think what we should do is create a portal of some type where people can send in their suggestions on what they think the Charter Review Commission could consider. And if we did that immediately, it fits right in line with our timeline, regardless, whatever we decide, feedback-wise. I think the timeline fits, okay? If you look at the timeline as proposed, October 11th is really when we're going to kind of dig in the weeds on the bylaws that govern the CDC and kind of what's the scope of this CRC and what's the scope of what they're going to be looking at. We've got a solid month, and so I think it fits into the timeline. Let's just figure out how we receive the information.
And I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure that we get citizen participation.
I agree.
And do it quickly, in a manner that we at least know what we're being asked to do, and not belabor the point. Just get to the point.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of thoughts. I agree. I mean, I think we all want citizen participation. I think that, you know, having some sort of portal, you know, a mechanism for people to ask questions and engage, I think is fine. But I think too, I mean, you know, the meetings will be open to the public.
Of course.
And people will ultimately be voting on those recommendations. So there will be the ability for the public to weigh in. I had a question about, maybe for you, Mr. Clerk. So, one, if, you know, the scope that we outline in bylaws, that doesn't keep the committee necessarily from going outside of that scope, right? I mean, it does give direction, but it doesn't prohibit them from making another recommendation, correct?
That's correct. We have had other recommendations come back outside of the scope specified. And then ultimately, as with the items that you give them, if they bring anything else back that you did not suggest to them for discussion, all of those are going to come to you for consideration, because it's your decision ultimately that determines what might go forward.
Okay. And then will we be able to, because I see October 11th, approving the bylaws, it would be important to me, if possible, if, is there, do we think that we can have? I guess I would love the opportunity to see those bylaws before we approve them at that meeting. So if it can come back to us at our next meeting on the 27th, I would be much more comfortable with that, so we can weigh in, because we don't have, you know, I mean, we're having this discussion now, and I think there are some, based on that discussion, I think you can flesh out the scope, and we're in, but I would feel more comfortable seeing. So I wanted to, you know, ask if, as a commission, and if you feel like that's going to be possible, because that would, I would feel much more comfortable if I could see those bylaws before we ultimately approve them.
I'll comment on that, and then the city attorney weigh in as well. I think we can bring something back to you in a short timeframe, but not with the specificity that I think you're looking for in terms of what you're asking the Charter Review Committee to do. In other words, we could put together a set of bylaws, but that key piece of, what are you asking them to look at? What is that scope that you're assigning to them? This discussion, if there's public input to be received, certainly, we couldn't receive public input and presume to form that into something that would go into the bylaws and then give to you. We could bring you bylaws absent that scope piece, I think. But I'll let the city attorney speak to that, since there may be some legal components with how those are put together and guide the committee.
I would just only add, and I think it really, thank you, goes toward your timetable as well. I mean, if you're utilizing the survey or informational, information from your portal to inform what you want the function of this committee to be, you're probably not going to have that information at your next meeting. So to the extent to which you can give guidance either at, at this meeting as to what you would want, from what you understand at this point, that would certainly assist in developing what the function of the committee would be, and also inform the timetable as well.
Commissioner Porter.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for now. I want to hear what everyone else has to say.
Sure. But let's also be very clear. When you mentioned defining the scope, no, it's the language that comes from this body that defines the scope.
Yeah.
Correct, Madam Attorney? So if we decide that we want a Charter Review Commission to look at a specific aspect of the charter, we are not expecting recommendations on the other aspects of the charter. If that is the case, then you just put the whole charter on the table for consideration. But if this body decides to only create a Charter Review Commission to look at specific aspects, whether it's the job duties of the four appointments, whether it's the form of government, whether it's the size of government, that can be limited, correct, Madam Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, you can, you can limit your scope, and, and certainly in the past, we have had, it's sort of like a specific charge for this committee. I think with the, the treasurer clerk was indicating, as people come in and they speak.
Sure.
And so if they come in and speak,
Public comments.
we certainly would bring that to your attention.
Of course.
But generally, there is a defined function for the committee.
Commissioner Matlow, then Commissioner Richardson.
He can go first.
You had your hand up first.
Okay, sure. I, I thought I spoke earlier. Well, yeah, no, I would say, I think, you know, as we discussed before, I think a top-to-bottom review is appropriate, let people make suggestions. You know, the timeline, I think there's probably plenty of time before the 2024 ballot or the 2026. I, I don't want to be all gas and no brakes on an arbitrary timeline and rush creations of bylaws and, and not get it right. I think getting it right is most important, and I don't think it slows down what's laid out here, but I, I would say that. I, I, I don't want to feel like we're on a collision course to meet a deadline when we're really just doing a review to see what's best for the city and putting that out and making sure it goes through a process that we can't be criticized for in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson, then the mayor pro Tim again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to agree with Commissioner Matlow on that, that timeline issue. I've made it abundantly clear that I'm not looking to rush this thing because there are some very important issues to be considered, even in the ones that have been brought up by the mayor pro Tim. And I, and, and I certainly think that we will need much more community input than the city's portal, because that's self-selecting in and of itself. That's for people who have access to the technology, who take the time to go to the website and find where the information is. And so I, I, I just think, even if we consider maybe doing something through our Neighborhood Affairs Office so that we can get more input and a more diverse section of input, if that's correct, from a more diverse part of this community. Because I just believe that if we only take input from a portal on the city's website, that is self-selective, and that I certainly don't want to see, given the importance of the issues that we will be taking up in this review.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Commissioner Richardson, I, I hear your concern. I, I guess it could, it doesn't have to be done one way. I think it can be done multiple ways.
Always.
All, all utility customers who have an email address or have signed up to get text messages will also get our communication electronically. So, and I, I think that that's, that's another way that we can, and make sure it gets into the hands of everyone who wants to, wants to participate. The other thing too is that Madam Attorney has, has done as, as I've, I've asked, to put together a presentation, a PowerPoint, to explain what our charter is and what our charter does, because there are so many folks who don't understand that we operate by a charter, don't know what's in it, don't understand it. So we definitely want to make sure that our residents understand what the charter was, was in it. I, I do not think that we want to open the charter up to just top to bottom, you can, to, 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 to just do whatever with it, because that's, you know, there, there's a reason why it, it is in place and has been in place for so long. So I, I just, I don't think that that's what you want to do. I think you want to do it piecemeal. You work on the part of the car that needs fixing and not, you don't crash the whole car and start again unless the car is dead, and that's not the case with, with our, with our, with our city. And I will say this as well, and by no means am I suggesting that we rush anything, but I do believe that we do need to move with some, some destination, our, our time and place, other than waiting for two or three years of reviewing, knowing that whatever we do, it won't, it won't be, it won't go into effect for maybe a couple of years. But it, it is my desire to see that, that we do what we need to do to make sure it gets to the ballot this year, for, for a couple of reasons. One, voter apathy is real, and if we can do, do things to drive people to, to the polls to vote, that's what we want. This is a presidential election coming up in 2024. That's where people typically show up to vote. And so here's an opportunity to capitalize on a, a good voter turnout, to actually hear what, what, where our residents really want. By 2026, we got a whole new population of folks, and it's midterm elections, and we know how dismal re, midterm elections returns are. Folks just don't show up, no matter what you do. So I, for one, I'm not saying all, you know, all gas and no brakes, but we're sitting here now, it's September, and, and we're talking about possibly, you know, doing what we need to do by June of 2024. A lot of things could happen by then, surely, so that we can then be ready for the ballot in November. So I, I, I'm just not understanding why we're sitting in September, thinking that almost a whole year from now, we couldn't be ready to hear what the residents want to say about, about the charter. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding that, you know, the, the, then you're not rushing. We're not rushing. It's a slow walk to November of 2024.
So I agree with you. The city attorney has got an incredible PowerPoint. Thank you for putting that together.
Mm-hmm.
And it sounds like that we're all interested in public education. Can I make a suggestion that would go into option number four?
Absolutely.
Recommendation? City Attorney has graciously agreed to host a meeting on the afternoon of the 27th, September 27th, our next meeting. We can do it at 1 o'clock. Not a workshop, but just an open, public meeting for anybody in the city of Tallahassee that's interested in learning about the city charter. We've got the, and I see checking your calendar just to make sure, but we've got this incredible PowerPoint. City Attorney can make herself available to answer any questions for anybody that wants to come as a starter meeting, and if we need to have more, we can do more. But I think that's, that's a great start to see kind of interest of people coming together talking about the city charter.
And having it, of course, recorded where we, it can be sent out
Oh, yeah.
to, to anyone who, you know,
Play it.
put on the website, but also sent to a text or
Right.
or, or email.
Right.
Which is what we use to send the utility, that's in the light bill out.
Yeah, and Commissioner Richardson, I, I, I hear your concerns, and they're valid concerns. I am not as concerned because the public has the opportunity to call us each and every day, email us directly, submit through a portal, see us when we're out and about, come to a city commission meeting and speak on the item. We're going to have now, it sounds like, a town hall with the city attorney. I think that by the time this committee is appointed and meet, that we are going to have ample opportunity, along with what Commissioner Porter said, the public participates in every meeting, they'll be participating in every Charter Review Commission meeting itself. I think that we will be able to provide ample public participation, and we'll be proud of the public participation by the end of this process.
I, I would tend to disagree with you on that, Mr. Mayor, because I've, I've seen what we've had in other public hearings. I mean, when we go to, for instance, when we've gone to Walk-A-Ford for a budget hearing, most of the attendees at those budget hearings are either staff or individuals from other parts of the community. It's not from the Bond or Walk-A-Ford community area. So we're not getting that input even in the budget process.
Sure.
And so I don't know that we can expect to get that because we have a workshop here at City Hall or even a meeting. There just has to be some other way of collecting that input so that we are assured that everybody has an opportunity to give that in.
Sure. Mayor pro Tim.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, on point. Commissioner Richardson, you know, I, I, I hear you. The reason we're asking Mr. Williams is to make it accessible. We can't go pick everybody up and bring them, but we are there so that they can reach it and can come to it. Now, when we were doing the Southside Action Plan, we went out into the community with handhelds to get information, and we can do that same thing again. We can go to shopping centers, we, we can, we can go out and do our best. Devin and, and some other folks, they went out to the market downtown, they went to a number of places using handhelds to get that information. We can do that same thing. It's been done before, we could certainly do it again. I just think that those who want to provide input, if we make it available
They will.
in a, in a, in a diverse number of places, they will. Football games, it's, it's the fall, you know, football is in there, so people that, you know, they're willing to tell you what they're thinking. So I think that if we take advantage of some of the, the things that we have available, we can, we can get this done and, and get a diverse group of, of responses from a diverse group of, of our community. I, I want to hear what all parts of the community have to say. Absolutely.
All right. Any other comment? Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, just really quickly, and Commissioner Williams-Cox, I, I don't think we're, we're in disagreement about whether it, it can be done. I, I'm just saying, I'm not going to rush the process by any means. So when we start, the Commissioner Porter bringing up, can we get the bylaws quicker? To me, let's do it how long it takes, and if we get to a part of the process where we know the community doesn't know what we're discussing, I'm not going to move forward further. I, we're gonna, I'm gonna say, we need to wait, we need to go out, we need to do the town halls, we need to make sure the entire community knows what, what, what we're discussing. That's my point. And do I think that's impossible by June? I, I don't think that's impossible, but I, I do want to be very clear, you know, I want to make sure the community is along for the conversation. We have ample input on, on everything we're discussing before we even move forward to placing anything on the ballot. Thank you.
Great. So the motion on table made by the mayor pro Tim, signed by myself, is for options one through four. Part of option number four is that Madam Attorney has graciously agreed to host a town hall on September 27th.
Let's not call it a town hall.
Sure.
Let's call it a, a, a education.
An educational meeting on
Our charter.
the city charter.
Yeah.
Sounds great. On September 27th, 1 o'clock? Madam Attorney?
Yes.
1 o'clock. Sounds great.
One more point of clarification on, on the motion and the portal. That's part of the motion still, is that?
The, the portal was not part of the motion. Public engagement was a part of the, of the, of the, of the motion, and that can be, I don't, you know, it can be done however we need to do it.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 12.02.
Mr. Mayor, before we, before we move forward, let me ask this question, because I think the clerk needs to know, are we staying, are we in agreement that we're going to move forward with some type of survey? And we're asking for input to, to provide something that will, would feed that?
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. That is not direction that is clear to me.
Exactly.
What is very clear is that they'll have the September 27th educational session and that you desire additional public engagement, but what form that needs to take, I don't have direction on, on that and would need to do that rather than presume what a majority of the body would want.
Thank you. That was my point. You don't have direction, and I, I'm hoping that you will get direction today so that you can do what you need to do. Madam Attorney has done her, she's ready to, ready to go. You've been trying to do yours, but you need, you need input. I've provided mine, my input, what I, what I would want to see happen, but I'm just one person.
I've provided mine too.
And you've provided yours.
Yep. All right, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Mr. Banjer, can we put together through PIO, some type of 32nd PSA, for all of our digital communications to go out, writing people to send us or send the treasurer clerk any recommendations on the Charter Review Commission? Have the treasurer clerk's office be the central collector of that information, as he has been up to this point?
Mr. Mayor, I think we could do pretty much anything.
Yeah.
In fact, the treasurer clerk's the lead. I think he remains the lead.
Right.
If you want to turn us loose and gather an information.
That'd be great.
I mean, that's kind of how we work. So, I mean, if there are no boundaries, you just tell us.
Yeah.
Treasurer clerk's the lead, and we'll get information. You know, if you want to craft it, obviously, we're here to
That'd be great.
tell us if there are any limitations on how you wish us to proceed.
You need a formal motion, or are you comfortable with this direction?
Let me, treasurer clerk's the lead, so I don't want to get in front of him. Let me, let me defer to him.
I think the content is, is the key.
Right.
And so if you want a survey with specified questions of yes or no, tell us that's what you want and what those questions are, and we can work with city manager's office with the various tools that are available to get those out. Again, if you have specific directions on, on those, we'll take that. If it's interest in just opening a, a portal to receive information, again, we can, can gather that. But the content of, of what you want is the, is the thing that needs to be specified.
Mayor pro Tim.
And I, I know, I know that. I used to do this. That's why I'm saying that you need to know what we want you to do. You don't want to go off and have to create these yourself, and then we criticize you because you didn't do it right. That's why I gave you mine.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter.
I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would not be in support of a yes-no system for a survey.
That's right.
I, so as long as we're talking about sort of letting people know this is happening, that they have an opportunity to weigh in and learn more about this.
Right.
You know, if, as long as that's what we're talking about, then I, then I'm in full support. I just want to make sure that, as far as where I'm coming from, that's clear, and as we do, you know, I know that I've had Google Forms, I know that you've done that, Commissioner Williams-Cox, so if, you know, if we want to do that on an individual basis, as we engage with the public, I think that we should do that, but as, I just wanted to make that clear and, and clarify that that's what we were talking about.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you. Well, I'll make a motion that we have the treasurer clerk open a portal for submissions of ideas, and we direct the city manager to let the entire city know, by all means, at his disposal.
Yeah. Sounds great.
With the, with the day, with the, the day, let's say, for the television.
Your motion on the floor.
Channel.
I'll be more than happy to help. For some utility bill.
Oh, his direction, okay.
Yeah, keep it open-ended. Jim receives the information as it comes in. Are we all clear on the motion?
With the, with the, with the time certain, it won't be open forever?
Yeah, for the next month at least, but that's our next check-in, well, the next check-in for the approval of the law, bylaws for the CRC. So we got at least a month right now just to collect information, and if we want to keep it open more, we can keep it open more.
I absolutely agree.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks for clarity, Commissioner Matlow.
Just to, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to make sure I've got it. So we will open a portal to receive suggestions or ideas from the public regarding actions to be considered by the Charter Review Committee.
Correct.
We'll work with our various tools available to get that communication. We will open that as soon as we can practically do so. I'm assuming the interest is go ahead and get that going, and we would keep it open for now, I will say, until October the 11th. That's your, that's the meeting. We'd be, bring the bylaws back, so you would at least want that information at that meeting, and then if you wanted to extend it, you could. Is that?
Sounds great. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 12.02, Mr. Banjer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was before you at your last meeting. It involves the recommended marketing or seeking of bids for a .78 acre portion of North Bicycle Boulevard. You directed staff to move this to this meeting, wait one meeting, to allow for Koka to potentially speak with Park 7, which is a, is an interesting bidder because of they've, they've aggregated property nearby for potential development. At the time of the agenda item, that communication hadn't occurred, but we're told that since the agenda was put out last week, it has. There was a discussion about somehow using the old warehouse property, and I think that has been explored with the developer. I'm not sure that's feasible. What I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, is ask our real estate director, Mr. Culverhouse, to kind of level-set us to where we are today. And there's, there's also been some discussion about past contamination on the site. I've got Alyssa Meyer, she's head of our environmental group. I'd love to her to comment on that as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, the manager is correct. Last Friday, I was notified by the developer that Koka had made contact with them. They had a discussion about possibly salvaging the, the warehouse property, and very simply put, the developer said that a, a salvaging this property was not possible. And so that's where we're back here today, asking again if, if we can now proceed with the invitation for bids.
Excellent.
Any, any agreement which may result from that bid would be brought back to this commission for final approval.
Okay.
Thank you, Robert. Alyssa, would you mind, just so we've got a full discussion, there's been questions about past contamination, status of the property, and kind of where it stands today?
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager. So this property is a portion of the CSX parcel one area. It was within the Gaines Street Brownfield corridor. It was assessed and cleaned up in accordance with 62780 Florida cleanup standards, and that closure was in 2014 that we received. So there's no additional assessment that needs to be done. It's regulatorily closed at this point.
Thank you, Alyssa. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll remind, it, it's kind of a, an unusual detail. This property is not buildable because there's an ingress egress easement on it, so the developer, whoever may purchase the property, if sold, they can't build on the property. As we understand it, the property could be of value though, because it could allow an adjacent property owner to take the density value from the property. So it, it essentially is an alleyway today and will, will remain that way even if sold.
All right.
So we're, we're here to answer any more questions you might have.
Appreciate it. I know we got Mr. Epstein that's been waiting patiently online. Mr. Cook, do we have any public speakers in person first?
We do have three speakers in person, Mayor. The first is Jim Dade and then Kathleen Spiehar. As with the earlier portion of our meeting, each speaker will have three minutes.
Great. Thanks for joining us, your name and address for the record, please.
My name is actually Jim Odie, that's an O, not a D, but I get that all the time. But I'm 802 Eugene Street. And I just want to comment on the fact that they're talking about demolishing a historic landmark that has housed some of the greatest poets, the greatest musicians on the planet. And it's old heart pine built from Tallahassee. And I think Tallahassee, it would behoove Tallahassee to save this historic landmark. The developer says to demolish it. Yet, they want to save all that precious heart pine to reuse. I think we need to get an independent person to look at it and see, I think the building can be salvaged and it's a historic landmark that Tallahassee should be proud of, something we want to pass down to our children. You cannot, the Guyotto monks have played there. You do not want to tear down a piece of history that you cannot replace. You can spend millions of dollars and never build something like this because it's been here since the 20s. And there's so many wonderful, wonderful things that have happened there and so much wonderful history behind it. Tallahassee needs to be proud of its heart pine, it needs to be proud of this particular building that's been here for a long time. And it's only been the warehouse since, I think, 88 when Jay bought it. I don't understand all the subtle nuances of the developer and what goes on. And if property is not buildable, I don't understand what the problem is in salvaging the building and using it as a community center for people to make, we can reinforce it and make it the best sounding venue because of all that nice wood. Needs a little bit of work. Got the most celebrated graffiti artist on the planet right now willing to come down and do painting. Got a painter that's got paintings in the White House, it's a local that wants to do some artwork. Something that will bring people to Tallahassee, I believe, just to see the warehouse. And we can make a wonderful musical venue and make a place for people in the community to come and relax and do whatever. Have an investor in town that's got $500,000 he wants to put into a community center. A local lawyer that's done so many good things for so many communities. And we could turn it into a place that we can show our children, our grandchildren, something to be proud of. And it's absolutely insane. Would you want to take the pyramids down and use the stones to build some modern structure? No. This is, the same thing is true of the warehouse. And I know there are a lot of people that think exactly like that. And unless you've got a humongous door and you can go back in time, you can't, you cannot build this. You can, you need to save it. Look what Atlanta has done, look what, look what all these other towns are doing. They're saving their historic buildings, they're not tearing them down. And the builder can say what he wants, but I think we need to get another opinion on, I mean, certainly the developer doesn't want to save the building. So they're going to say that it's not salvageable. I believe it is. It's built back when buildings were built alive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker, please.
Kathleen Spiehar and then Dylan Feltz.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Kathleen Spiehar, Executive Director of the Council on Culture and Arts, 914 Redwood Avenue, Tallahassee. So thank you so much Commissioners for your time today, really appreciate it. And I've got my update, as you may recall, I emailed all of you before the August 23rd commission meeting, informing you that we had members of the community reaching out to me about this venue and in hopes of keeping the existing structure to be used in the areas redevelopment. So, and also in that email, I talked about the Bradfordville Blues Club and their needs, which, because their long time space and had closed in April. So COCA's role in this was threefold, and that's to convene the community, to meet the community's request to COCA, to contact the developers per the city request, and then to contact Bradfordville Blues Club about the space needs. And so since then, we've spoken with the Bradfordville Blues Club, we spoke with other organizations that were just looking at spaces in this area. We scheduled a meeting, a community meeting for August 29th, which needed to happen. That conversation needed to happen before we connected with the developers. So we, I had that information to give to the developer, but that was postponed due to Hurricane Adalia. So the convening happened on September 5th instead, and then a follow-up conversation was requested. So for the record, after the September 5th meeting with the community, COCA spoke with the developer, Chris Kurtzman from Park 7 Group about the plans for the building and the site. It was a very cordial conversation and very helpful. This information was then shared in the second community meeting, which conveyed on September 12th. So that was just yesterday. So some information just to share, is that the Bradfordville Blues Club is not seeking a building to purchase and renovate at this time. And the other organizations are, they were seeking to create either a performance space or some kind of a space for performing arts, have other plans and are not interested in the location. And the building condition Park 7 Group had shared, and so some of that's already been talked about and demolishing the building, but salvaging it has, for repurposing is the plans right now. However, Chris Kurtzman, the developer, has, is willing to meet with the community members about the building and about odd ideas that the community members may have about moving the building, so, which was a suggested idea, and that the building demolition would not occur until fall of 2024. And so then the community members have, as you can hear from today's meeting, have discussed the space and have some ideas about that they would share. One consistent theme though is that the building brought people together and it's really important to the community. So as requested, I'm going to connect the community members with Park 7 Group, Chris was very open to that. So unless there's other requests, COCA is going to turn this back over to the community. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Dylan Feltz. And then our next speaker will be Max Epstein, connected virtually.
Thank you for joining us, your name and address for the record, please.
Dylan Phelps, 1010 Redbud Avenue, 32303. Sorry, I'm not very good at public speaking.
That's okay.
But I thank you all for your time. As you can tell, this building means a lot to us. It's not the building, it's the community that it built behind it. It's a community that we should be proud of and we should preserve. There's not something like this that can be rebuilt. No, it's not the building, it's what it represents. It's what it means to, I mean, look at the multi-generational gap here. Sorry, pardon my French. It matters to people three times my age, I just asked Jim. It's not just the hardwood, it's the heart of Tallahassee. It's changed and made so many people. And yet, we all retain our little bit of youth just by thinking of the building, just by thinking of it being there. So yeah, it's an old building in the way. I get it, but there's so many of us that's so much more than that. So if there's anything we can do to save it, that's what I'm here for, is to do anything I can to save it. There's something to be said for preservation. I know changes need to be made and cities need to adapt, but preservation is something that we should be able to focus on and be proud of, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Max Epstein?
Epstein, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Your name and address for the record, please, you have three minutes.
1001 San Luis Road. Thank you very much for putting a pause on this. I think you've heard from the community and while I'm ready to move forward with the bidding process, I would like the city to have an active role in trying to find a creative solution here to work with the community to save this space. When COCA shared this before the hurricane, it had 77 shares. And dozens and dozens, I would say probably hundreds of people commented on how important this place is to them. There is no way to rebuild it. Now, I did speak also with the developer who seems very open to discussions about moving it or salvaging part of it. One of the biggest issues seems to be the ingress egress. I'd like to see an actual item come back that discusses the issues with this parcel because it means that there is a brown field with arsenic concentrations that exceed residential and commercial standards that will never be cleaned up. And there's an area there that's not really going to be used for anything. There won't be on the tax rolls either. This is an opportunity to also work for our performing arts. We had $3 million for the CRA that did not go any of it to the performing arts. And we have so many groups that have approached and performed here that love this building. I think there may be a way to work with this developer, especially if we reexamine this ingress egress thing, which he said he tried to work with the city in 2017 to take legal action, the city did not want to. So I would appreciate an item to come back that addresses all of the issues with this parcel and also works to come up with a creative way to fund saving this building. I think if we came up with a solution for the developer that made financial sense, that he would be open to it. You know, there's, when, that 2014 report also for the environmental cleanup, that got rid of most of the groundwater and direct contact issues with the arsenic. But there are still exceedances of residential and commercial throughout that corridor.
You're at 30 seconds.
And the plan was basically, thank you, was to cap it with asphalt. So again, there are issues with that parcel behind it. I guess I won't belabor the point, but this is the heart of Tallahassee and it's the perfect place for it. It's the perfect place for an arts venue because it has been one. It was one for 40 years. And I hope that you bring back an item to deal, examine the ingress egress of issues with the parcel in depth and also creative ways to work with the developer to save the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Banjer, you brought up some environmental concerns, can we readdress those, please?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so we've shared that previously, but we can go deeper. So this received clearance at the state level in 2014. It's a very specific process in accordance with state law and Florida Administrative Code. Alyssa can share the details on that.
Yes, so the city conducted assessment and remediation activities to assess the extent of the contamination, the arsenic, the soils. That was all completed and in 2014, the Department of Environmental Protection entered into a conditional site rehabilitation completion order that we received regulatory closure, meaning that we were done with assessment and remediation at the site. The site is for, it was cleaned up to commercial and industrial standards with the redevelopment. Back then, that was, it was going to be turned into a parking lot area. That's what it is. There's a declaration of restrictive covenant aside from the ingress egress that, you know, basically restricts land use, certain land uses, like residential use. On the specific parcel that we're speaking of-
Right.
For CSX parcel one is not allowed unless additional work is done. But what we have it right now is a parking lot, the Department of Environmental Protection closed it under their rules in 2014 and there's nothing further for us to be doing at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, commission discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would move staff recommendation on option number one.
Second. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, signified by the mayor pro tem. Any other conversation? Commissioner Matlove?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I just want to thank COCA for their work in convening the community to discuss this. On the front end, I want to make it clear, the city of Tallahassee doesn't own the property that the warehouse sits on. So I mean, there's been a conversation about is it able to be salvaged in any way? Because we're selling an adjacent piece of property to the same owner. And I get what people are feeling. I mean, we saw the Bradfordville Blues House close, you know? I played a lot of games of pool, went to a lot of open mic nights at the warehouse. I get it, but at the end of the day, it's a piece of private property that we have no control over what happens with it. So I mean, is there possibilities to work with a developer to relocate it? It sounds like those conversations may still be open. But I did want to make that clear, that we're not voting on whether, we don't have any control over what happens to the property that the warehouse sits on or the actual building. It's just not under our purview. Secondly, we have sold many parcels along this corridor. And just a question for the city manager, this one we put out to bid and it seems like its value really is only to one. The value of it is to the adjacent property owners and there likely would be one person interested in a piece of property that can't be redeveloped. So I just wanted the staff's reasoning for putting this one out to bid, but not other properties wanting to get it out to bid.
Well, let me jump in first and then I'm going to let the manager speak. The difference is, is that in the past, people have proactively come to the city to provide us with a bid. And the way how the policy states is when they provide us with a bid saying, you own that piece of property, I would like to buy that from the city, staff brings it to us for our consideration. This is, you're correct, we haven't actually received any bids, but staff has made determination that we don't need to own the easement behind this piece of property. So you put it out for bid, did I get that correct?
Yeah, there's a nuance in here though, Mr. Mayor. There is interest from this developer to buy this piece of property.
Sure.
And in fact, I think probably the distinction is there was an agreement that was authorized by the city commission in 2018 to sell this property to the developer. It fell through, it didn't happen. They've renewed their interest in it, but it was our discretion that we felt like it needed to come back to the city commission. We would recommend that we put it out for bid. They are probably likely to be the bidder, seems to be most valuable to them. But there's some chance that it would not, but because of the history with this and that it was already approved, the deal fell through, we felt like we needed to bring it back and recommend that there be a bid process.
Yeah, okay, no, I appreciate it. I appreciate that clarity. I mean, it just is very confusing, I think, to people when we have a specific developer interested in a specific property and they may be the only person with any interest of it at a time when you would get an offer, that every other property we discuss with developers over the course of years and then they finally have a realtor put in a bid and then we say, we can't put that out to bid. It's just a bad process of we're not being consistent every time we sell public land. But I do support the motion on the table. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too wanted to thank COCA, to thank the community members who came together to discuss what options there are. I want to thank the commission, you know, when this came before us. I mean, even though we are moving forward as we would have two weeks ago, I think it's always, you know, postponing just a little bit to give us time to explore those options makes me feel a lot better as we move forward. And I do think, you know, I too, was one of the first places I went to when I moved to Tallahassee was the warehouse. The best people, I mean, best friends to this day I met at the warehouse. And I think that I'm grateful that there is some time to see what we might, what might be able to come working with the developer since demolition isn't scheduled for another year. But I think regardless of that, there's a need for that kind of venue, that kind of space. And I know that we can work together to rebuild that kind of community. You know, it's not attached to one structure or to the warehouse. It's something that's in us, it's something that we can build. And so I really do hope, because this is something we've heard, I've heard, that we're looking for, the city wants a space like that. You know, we, more spaces like that. And so I hope that this will be kind of like a springboard for more discussions about how we can cultivate a community, find a space that will kind of, you know, meet that need. Because it really, when the warehouse closed, it left a huge gap, you know, in the creative space. And, you know, I hope that we're not deterred by this, but that we can move forward and find an alternative because I think it's possible. And I think this has been a great opportunity to bring a group of people together who are now talking about this. And I hope that this isn't the end of that conversation, but the beginning instead. So I hope that there's, you know, that there's something that we can make happen, whether it's with this structure or beyond. So I just wanted to thank you all for speaking on this issue. And yeah, I'm excited to see what we can make happen and just know that this isn't the end of that. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We're on item number 12.03, Rental Assistance and Rental Protection Program. Mr. Banjer?
Mr. Mayor, Assistant City Manager Ben Ojatayo will introduce this item.
Assistant City Manager Ojatayo, good to see you.
Thank you, it's very good to see everybody. Good afternoon and thank you, City Manager. It's my pleasure to introduce the team that works every day with so many partners around the community. the community to address the issues that you commissioners asked us to bring before you. If you recall, you asked us to bring an informational item that describes the sort of myriad of activities and programs that are available in our community that provide rental assistance as well as renter protections. As you know, there are several things that we do as a city government, but everything we do is in partnership with so many people that are best equipped and best positioned to provide this kind of service in our community. And they do that every day with multiple case managers and multiple support staff. Part of what we know to be true is that, like in other critical and complex issues in our community, there's usually not a one solution that fits everything. There's also not one silver bullet. There's not one agency, but there are quite a few. So I want to really appreciate Anita Morrell, who's our manager for human services, who's here, as well as the leadership of Dr. Kimball Thomas. And our housing and community resilience team partners with so many agencies across the community to provide many direct services to our residents and to partner with those institutions that are federally designated to provide that. And this is the case here with rent assistance as well. You'll hear from the details that Anita will share that we have federal programs and federal designations. We have state actors that play their part. And very rarely you have counties as well that enter into the space of rent assistance directly. You also know that recently there's been state legislation that prohibits quite a bit of protections, so to speak, or any kind of limitations that we may place on rent in our community. And so in that landscape and with the flow of millions of dollars from the federal government to the state, we find our place with our partners in this community to, to get this done for our, our residents. I wanted to highlight 211. They were just here. You, you gave the proclamation to them. They're a real key corner piece to this that helps us to get clarity about the programs that are available in the community, as well as to triage all the needs that come to us. Together with the city and the county, we are really reliant on them for this kind of service. So I wanted to give a little bit of that preamble and then invite Anita Morrell, who's closest to the issue and really the expert in our city government on the issue of providing direct assistance to vulnerable residents. And she'll give a quick overview of sort of the agents and the players that are at play. And then myself and Dr. Kimball, of course, remain available to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you. Anita, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Mayor. As Abin stated, in your item, there are a lot of detailed information about the collaborations and the partnerships that we have with these agencies to implement programs to our residents. Annually, our agencies distribute over $20 million in this community for rent assistance. The largest agency being the Tallahassee Housing Authority that actually provides subsidized housing for our families through their housing choice vouchers, which is, which comes up to about $19 million. Our other key players have about $2 million that they use to help with rent assistance and rent services because it's not just rent assistance. It's rent assistance is just rent services as well, trying to relocation, rehousing, and also utilities, which can sometimes displace families from house, from, from that stable housing. In addition, these agencies are integral parts to the human services ecosystem. They are the ones that are on the front line doing this work. So they are the ones that know exactly how it needs to be structured and how it needs to be implemented to help families move along this journey. Over the past three years, everyone knows that we saw a significant injection of money into our community. Through that money, we were able to disperse those funds to those agencies to provide those critical services as well for rent, but mostly through the city cares to help prevent foreclosures, interruptions in utility services and evictions. But I just want to let you know that although we had that significant injection of funding, the city and the county together for decades have been making an investment in our agencies, mostly through our CHSP process. So every two years, agencies are able to come to our process and receive services for emergency services to help families with rent assistance. Generally, like Assistant City Manager Abin Ojutayo stated, generally cities and counties are not involved in providing direct services. However, we work with agencies like 211 to make sure that families and residents are connected to the services that they need to help them become stable. You can see in our illustration that 211 is the key player in connecting everyone. We have our funding through the COC that is dispersed to those agencies like Family Promise, Community Action, Echo. We also have the Kearney Center as well. And of course, I mentioned CHSP, which is critical to providing those services as well. Right now, the county and the city provides funding to 211 to make sure that those services are available and readily available to provide to those agencies that are, I'm sorry, to those residents that are seeking services during a crisis, to where they don't have to call the agency and not know if funding is available. 211 is connected directly to every agency. We meet monthly with 211 and all partner agencies to make sure that everyone is aware of what is available in our community. So 211 can connect that resident to those services without the resident having to be stifled with trying to maneuver within this system. You'll also see that legal services and legal aid is part of our collaboration. They play a key role in making sure that those residents that are having landlord tenant issues have someone or have somewhere to go to to resolve those issues. They actually, especially legal services in North Florida, they offer representation. They offer to file motions for families that may need to file a motion to stop an eviction. So all of these players play a key role in ensuring that families are housed and stably housed and affordable housing. So that's my presentation. You have any questions?
You, you all have done a fantastic job with this agenda item and Anita, you did a great job with the presentation. Certainly do appreciate it. Stick around just in case we do have some questions, okay? Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item? It is an informational item, but do we have any public comment on this item?
We do have one speaker on this particular item.
Wonderful.
That is Stephanie Johnson.
Thanks for joining us. You name and address for the record, please.
Stephanie Johnson, 1536 Julie Neeny. Good afternoon. I'm the managing attorney of the Tallahassee Office of Legal Services in North Florida.
Great.
And legal services receives COVID money from the city and to assist renters and homeowners. And I wanted to thank the city for the opportunity to assist residents facing housing instability due to the pandemic. Unfortunately, while this funding comes to an end at the end of this month, the number of people coming to us for evictions and unstable living conditions is growing and growing. We will do our best to continue to help with the resources we have, but there may be many cases where we can only give advice or help people with prosa forms, which is unfortunate as multiple studies show that tenants who have legal counsel are much better, will get likely, get likely better results, which will help the tenants and often help the landlords themselves. With the funds received by the city and the county, we were able to handle over 751 housing cases. This included accessing rental mortgage assistance, stopping evictions and foreclosures, delaying evictions to give people more time to find a place to go, negotiating cases before the evictions were filed so that people did not have evictions on their records, and working out payment plans. We were able to obtain $171,000 in monetary benefits. We also conducted over 200 outreaches within the community and we distributed approximately 2,500 brochures. So again, thank you for the opportunity to work with the city and the county so that we were able to assist so many people affected by the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all do amazing work. We really appreciate it. All right. Any other public comment on this item? Mr. Clerk, any other public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. It's an informational only item, but any comment, colleagues? Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll make a, you know, a motion to accept the information if we need one. I, I want to thank everyone in the audience who's, who's doing this work and especially the staff. This was something that came out of a, you know, I think we had a, I mean, we've had numerous discussions about this, but a couple of months ago, I, you know, I'm a little, I was frustrated reading this item because I feel like we are, we are not considering alternatives. Even if we don't decide to pursue them, we should consider them. And if we don't take alternatives seriously, then we can't know whether or not we're on the right track. There are other communities in Florida who are providing direct rental assistance. I'm not saying we have to do it, you know, whether or not we want to or whether or not we want to give more support since the COVID, you know, the, the federal money is, is no longer, it's not recurring. But I, I wish we could think a little bit bigger about this and ask questions more like, okay, not what are we doing and then there, but what would we need to do to meet the need? What would it take to really meet the need? Knowing that there's probably nothing we could ever do to really, really meet the need, but to, you know, I mean, in, in the item, we're talking about, you know, providers that are, you know, they're running, they're running out of all of their funding within five months. And, and that might just be one provider, but I know and I think we know from our offices and we, we, some of us shared this when we were speaking last about this, you know, 211 is great. They're referring people to agencies that have no money. And, and some of them do and then a lot of them don't. And so, you know, and that's a, that, that's a decision for, for us as a commission to make about our budget priorities and whether we, whether we're content with what we're doing or whether we need to do, do more and invest more and give more support to the agencies that are serving these populations. You know, even as an example, you know, the, and I would love and, and there's, you know, I know this is not the last time, this is not the first time we're talking about this and it won't be the last. I would, and I've gotten, we've gotten updates about the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund. I, there are a couple follow-up questions that I, you know, for another meeting, I won't go over it all today. But, you know, even the under renter protection resources, you know, the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund, it's much more of landlord protection than it is a renter protection. So I, and that's just to say, I, I really think that the need is so great. I think we all see that. I think a huge thing that definitely was not preempted was providing more support to legal services of North Florida, to legal aid. That's one of the best ways to keep people in their homes that we know of. I mean, it's something crazy, like 75% more likelihood of staying in place if you have counsel, if you have that kind of representation. You know, Orlando has programs. They've got a code enforcement division that only does housing. You know, there's all, and I know this is multi-layered and, and complex, but I would personally just really love to see, I would, I would feel so much better if I felt like we really were considering all of our options, all alternatives, instead of limiting ourselves, ourselves to, to what we've already done. And to me, this item felt, and I know the item was an update on what we're doing, but I think that the conversation was definitely much more about, okay, I mean, what, where can we go from here to really meet this need? So I see this as an opportunity for us to continue having this conversation. And I'm, I'm not going to make a motion today, but I, you know, I really, part of the conversation too, we were having was whether or not there was, you know, any funding available for, you know, you, Mr. Mayor, made, made the comment about, you know, can we provide more in rental assistance? It doesn't have to be direct rental assistance from the city, but, but to our service providers, do we need more funding in that CHSP category? There, there are options and, you know, even to, I had questions about kind of a hotline or whatever. When I read the city's website, I mean, for, for support, it is perplexing. It is not intuitive. If I were to just Google, you know, where do I go for this? It wasn't easy to find. So, you know, I think I would love to see us make, you know, if it's just a landing page, directing people to 211. I mean, we've got it written in, in text and that's great, but I think that, you know, when people are in crisis, you know, they got an eviction notice, they've got kids, they don't know what they're, to expect them to like go through pages and pages and pages is, that's the last thing a person needs. You know, and I, I'm not in the position that so many people are in, but I think I'm probably the only renter in all of Leon County government, if I had to guess. And the anxiety of I've experienced personally, knowing that I have the resources that I have over my rent going up, over, you know, I went a couple of months without a roommate and I couldn't afford to pay my rent. That, and, and I am in so much better shape than a lot of people who struggle a lot more than I do. So this is only getting worse. This is not getting better. And I really see this as an opportunity for us to be creative, to not be limited by what other cities and communities are doing, even though I think that they're doing more that we can learn from, but I also think that we can do more that they can learn from. And because we know that there are people here doing that work and they need a little bit more support from us to do it. So I'm glad that we, I know that this is, you know, only second to public safety. Our, our priority as a city, we, with our proclamations today about mental health, suicide awareness, substance abuse awareness, all of that comes back to housing and having stable housing, having stable living conditions for, for someone's mental health, for someone's ability to, to stay sober. All of that is interrelated. We know that. I don't have to belabor that point, but I, I just can't emphasize enough how much more I want us to do and that I believe we can do with the providers that we have. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, but I would love to see us get there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Informational item, I just want to say, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You did hear this commission loud and clear. We asked for more funding for rental assistance and I don't know how you did it, but you made it happen and you have stretched it out through the end of this fiscal year, which ends on September 30th. I don't know how you made that miracle work and I appreciate it. You do think outside the box. I was really proud to attend Magnolia Oats ribbon cutting yesterday.
Yes.
110 affordable housing units, the entire complex. The project passed on a 3-2 vote. I was very proud to be in the majority. We have to build more. We have to continue to provide resources. We have to continue to work with the private sector, the nonprofit sector, the faith-based sector. I think y'all do amazing work and I really do appreciate it. Thank you. We are on item number.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sure. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you. And, and I appreciate you and those comments as well, Commissioner Porter. I mean, I think when we look at, and this will probably be more a budget conversation, but I do think the point is, what is our target? How much of the need are we looking to meet? And I mean, that's a question for, for my colleagues. You know, if, if we know that people are coming for rental assistance and it's running dry, we know how much we're spending each year, we know what the demand is, how much are we willing to meet? Is it 20%? Is it 30%? Is it 40%? I mean, we have a responsibility to put, pin the paper and really decide where these priorities are. And I think we miss that when we get into our budget workshops. It just seems glossed over. We get, you know, we have a perfectly balanced budget, but there's needs in our community. The needs are going up, the funding's going down. And that's the recipe for disaster. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on, we are on item number 12.04. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves the potential co-location of the Greyhound bus service with CK Steel. They're currently across the street from each other. And there's multiple departments have been working on this concept to see if it's feasible. We have reached the point where we believe it is feasible and we're seeking your authorization to negotiate and execute an agreement. to negotiate and execute an agreement between the city and Star Metro and Greyhound lines. Angela Baldwin is our chief transit officer. She's been working on this topic for some time, and she's here to provide an overview. And we seek your approval of this.
Angela, good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, Manager, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners and appointed officials. So we're equally excited to be here today to share with you some of the hard work that's been taking place between Star Metro and some other city departments, real estate, risk management, growth management, and many more to work towards making this idea a reality. As mentioned, due to the sale of Greyhound's building and their facility, and a change in their customer-facing operations, they, Greyhound approached us to co-locate at CK Steel Plaza. As you know, this co-location model is not new, it's one that's happening across the country. And Greyhound approached us with their needs, which included use of our public facilities, drop-off and pickup locations, and the space to operate a small ticket booth. We've worked together and identified two outer gates at the Plaza, as you can see here, to potentially accommodate their needs. If approved, our city teams will continue to work closely with Greyhound to make the necessary site improvements to ensure that transition between our services and theirs are seamless. And to ensure that safety for all of our customers. With our bike racks, our scooters, the express routes that go there, as well as the dedicated FSU gate that we have there, this Greyhound addition will further get us closer to the multimodal transfer, transit hub that's outlined in the city strategic plan. This innovative approach to providing safe, equitable, and accessible multimodal transit services to our customers and visitors is one that is supported and encouraged by the Federal Transit Administration as well. And today, we seek your approval to negotiate and execute a license agreement with Greyhound. And we're joined here today by Eric Jenkins, the audience, district manager of operations for Greyhounds, and we're available should you have any questions.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have one speaker on this item, Mayor Cheryl Collier-Brown.
Okay.
He's waving.
She, she's waving.
Waving.
All right, any other public comment?
No, sir.
I move, I move, um,
Second.
Staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Richardson, you recognize-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but just very quickly to commend the leadership of Star Metro for being visionary in this respect and providing this type of transportation availability for the residents and guests of our wonderful city. So Angela, thank you for the work that you and your staff have done to make this happen. The question that I have, and I've been, I've gotten it from the media and from individuals, is the talk of what will happen to the current Greyhound site? Is there any word about what's going to happen to that at this point?
Mr. Manager?
I think our real estate director, Mr. Culver-House, probably can answer, but we do, we do, we do know that it's their intent to sell that property. I'm not sure what we can disclose about that, Robert will have the most information.
Yeah, because I was asked if the city intended to buy it, and I knew that conversation hadn't come, at least to me.
Yeah, no, sir, that, that's not the case at all.
No, and, and, and city staff, as far as the, the Greyhound's location, we've only been very tangentially involved in what they're doing over there. I can only tell you what has been passed along to me from the, from the folks at Greyhound is that their site has already been sold.
Oh, okay.
But there has been no mention about what is going to-
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
All right.
I, I will. Okay, we, we have another public speaker on this item while we have a motion on the table, Jim.
Yes, sir. Mayor, my apologies for the late notice on that. We do have Bernard Stevens speaking on this item.
Okay. Your name and address for the record, please. Thanks for joining us. Thanks for sticking around.
Bernard Stevens, Florida Statute 119. Reverend Charles Kenzie Steel Bus Plaza is located at 111 West Tennessee Street in downtown Tallahassee, on a block bordered by Tennessee Street, Adams Street, Carl Street, and Duval. The Plaza features 24 covered gates for passengers boarding. Alight amenities of the Plaza include restrooms, covered seating areas, a bus driver lounge, and a customer service booth. That Plaza looks the same as it looked when I was a kid. We have spent millions of dollars everywhere else in the city besides public transportation. You are willing to do a merger with Greyhound because it brings revenue to the city. Then, on top of you being able to do business with them, you have to provide them with a ticket booth. You're going to have to build onto that in order to get money. What about the residents that are already here? What about the residents that go to the Bus Plaza, have to look at the restrooms in there that are garbage? What about the, what about the infrastructure? Why do we continue to forget about why we are here? Every time it comes to a dollar, y'all ready to jump? Every time, oh, we're going to get some money, yeah! But what about the people? When they go somewhere, they want to be treated. If I spend a dollar and 25 cent to get on that bus, I want the bus driver to smile, I want to be able to go to the Plaza and it's clean. You don't get that. You forget about that. You only concerned about the dollar. I agree with the merger, but in order for that to happen, you got guests stopping into our city to see our raggedy CK Steel Plaza. Reverend would be ashamed if he see that today. Rosa Parks sat in the front of the bus for a reason, and she did that because she wanted to make a change. I'm not afraid, and I'm going to stand up and tell you the truth. That's why all these firefighters in this building today, because one thing about a lie, it always seemed to come back with more power. Now, this CK Steel Plaza, you need to start working on renovations. You said you was going to go on the south side to make a whole nother Bus Plaza. Go look over there and see what it look like. It looks the same way. So somebody's not doing something with the money since we said we're good stewards over the money. But it can't be that when every time a business come along, yeah, we'll meet you, we shake your hand. You all, all at the chambers of commerce, talking about money with the businesses in Tallahassee. So that means one thing. I must be on to something. So if you're going to do right, you treat the residents right. Give CK Steel Plaza some more money-
You're 30 seconds.
-so it can start to look like something. That's all it takes. Did you say 30 seconds?
Yes, sir.
All right. Put the money in the Plaza. They're going to almost give you a look like $60,000, if I, if I looked it correctly. So that's a lot more revenue coming in. So can we do something with the bathrooms? Can we do something with the seating? Can we do something with that? The drivers lounge should look a whole lot better than what it did before. But the customers, that's, that's how you get paid. Treat them like they were something. The value of the dollar hasn't changed. The price of everything goes up. So you know what that mean? Greed. We just greedy.
Thank you. I just want to say to our friends from Greyhound that's here, we, we are looking forward to this partner. Personally, I'm looking forward to this partnership. I think it's going to be fantastic. I think it's the, the next step forward for our community, and we appreciate y'all's willingness to bring this to the table. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to piggyback on that, otherwise I would not have led by making the motion. And I'm very proud of what we do at CK Steel. Like in any facility that we have, we have to keep it up, and we have to make modifications as we grow. As a city, we're not the same city we were when we first did CK Steel. And so things happen, we evolve, we move forward. It's not, it's not necessarily about the money, it's about what our residents want and need. And I know that Ms. Baldwin, you and your team do an excellent job of making sure that, that our public transportation, every, every city doesn't have public transportation. So we're blessed to have public transportation. And we're also very blessed that we don't have to pay for it because the ridership does not pay for the full operation of Star Metro. We get those dollars from other places. And just recently, we got $35 million from, from the feds to do some things, including the, the south, south side of our transit facility. So I'm very proud of the work that you do there, that you, you and your team do there, and, and the residents who, who come in and out of there. We, we do know that as times evolve, we do need to do things, and I'm glad to hear, and I know that will happen. We will have security there, we'll have what is needed to, to make sure that the residents and the employees there will be safe and protected because we know that even though Greyhound is across the street, we know that if, if you've ever been in the Greyhound facility, there are some folks who, who are there that are not there to ride the bus. And just like you find at CK Steel, you got folks there who are not there to ride the bus. They're there for a whole lot of other reasons. But we cannot discriminate, so we just have to make sure that the place is safe for everyone. And I know you all have done that, and you will continue to do that. So thank you for being good neighbors in agreeing to not send Greyhound out of Tallahassee because that is a means for multi-state transportation for a lot of folks, but allowing an opportunity for Greyhound to remain in Tallahassee because that is also jobs that we want to keep in Tallahassee. But it's also an opportunity for multi-state travel to allow people to be able to get around. So comprehensive, multimodal, like you said, transportation center at CK Steel. Being a member of Bethel Missionary Baptist Church where Dr. CK Steel was the pastor, I think he'd be very proud of what we're trying to do here in our city. It's a whole lot more than what used to happen. And so thank you for what you all are doing.
Commissioner Matlow, I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question, Ms. Baldwin, I, I see the monthly rental rate of 59, or the annual revenue of about $59,000 in rent. Are there any added expenses on Star Metro's end that will also have to come out?
Any additional expenses? We looked at our janitorial, maintenance, security, all those, and utilities. Any additional expenses will be covered by Greyhound.
Okay, great. So this is a net positive of $59,000. Okay. That's great, and I want to thank you for your work and everybody at Star Metro. I, I think a lot of the times when we get into budget conversations, a lot of kind of extreme personalities want to point at Star Metro as a place to cut money because it's not, it's not generating enough revenue for its expenses. But we don't ask our roads to pay for themselves, we don't ask our bridges to pay for themselves. Why will we do that with public transportation that serves such an important need? So thank you for your work, and thank you for looking for additional funding for the service that saves the taxpayers money in the long run.
Commissioner Porter, any comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Richardson?
Oh, no, I'm done.
We're good.
I'm good, let's do it.
Motion on the table is for staff recommendation option number one. Seeing no further comp, who made the motion again?
I did.
Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Okay, do we have any other business come before us during policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
Okay, you know what? We're going to go ahead and recess now, we'll come back at 6 o'clock for the public hearing and jump right into public comment. Gentlemen, I'd like to call and order the public hearing. We have one item on the agenda before we get to unagented speakers. That is 14.01, the first of two public hearings on the fiscal year 24 budget plan. Let me go ahead and turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first of two public hearings, as you indicated, on the budget. Of course, the city commission and the public have engaged for many months now as we've worked through the budget plan. This month, we bring it in for landing with this public hearing in the one, two weeks from now. Robert Wigan is our Director of Resource Management. Everybody is familiar with Robert, and he's got a presentation to share, so everybody has the same information regarding this proposed budget.
Before we start, Robert, I want, want to once again thank you and the entire Budget Office team. I know you work hard year-round. This has been a difficult year, and I truly appreciate your efforts and everything that y'all do.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Appreciate that. Thank you, city manager, mayor, city commissioners, and appointed officials, members of the public. As mentioned, today, we're conducting one of two public hearings to approve the fiscal year 24 balanced operating and capital budget with an increased mileage rate proposal, new healthcare contract for employees, fire, EMS, and solid waste ordinance changes. The fiscal year 24 budget is $868.4 million. It's comprised of 14 uniquely accounted for funds. Each has their specific revenue source to support those 14 funds. And those funds and rates and fees equitably and responsibly ensure reliable, efficient, and effective municipal services. Those municipal services cross the general government, where we have our parks and recreation, police, housing community resilience, our public works operations, and then also 13 enterprise funds in our utilities. Also, within that $868 million is our $201.201 million general fund budget. The budget plan is the result of public engagement in five workshops that we've had during this year, two public hearings that we'll have today and two weeks from now, and then thousands of public interactions. The proposed budget outcome that we're working towards is to be a national leader in the delivery of public services. It funds city staff who have worked towards the goal of priorities of the strategic plan, reaching 89% of the 134 targets in that strategic plan. And the additional ones are on track to be achieved. The agenda and the fiscal year 24 budget is developed to hold the line in parks and recreation, neighborhood affairs, public works such as roads, streets, and beautification, with the same staffing and service standards to meet the strategic plan goals. These 14 funds that make up these various areas work collaboratively to accomplish service delivery in the face of rising costs, inflation, all leveraging greater productivity. For example, the city resurfaces 60 lane miles of roads each year, and we've maintained that level of output while absorbing 46% increases in the cost of asphalt. This collaboration also led us to the decision to replenish the special insurance reserve over four years to reduce the proposed fiscal year 24 operating budget by $1 million. This responsible rate of replenishment allows the city to continue to be fiscally responsible while also decreasing fiscal year 24 expenses. The fiscal year 24 budget is developed with coordinated operational efforts. In another example, vehicles are evaluated by police, solid waste, engineers, inspectors, road crews to, to, to accomplish the million miles a month that we drive in order to, to deliver service to the community. Active management means that our fleet replacement fund has increased annually by only 2% with a fleet of 2,800 vehicles. That is then accommodating the, the cost increases that we've seen in a garbage truck, for example, that's increased 27% over the last few years, and the cost of light-duty vehicles that have increased by 74% over the, over the last few years. Working together, we've extended mileage, do preventative maintenance. We rotate vehicles for best and highest uses, and we save millions a year in fleet replacement costs in order to be efficient and effective. A key element of the fiscal year, other key elements of the fiscal year 24 budget includes that in recognition of inflation, market costs, and productivity improvements, that we are an employer of choice, providing a 5% pay increase, a guaranteed $2,000 minimum increase for employees. Those two, that $2,000 will impact 13% of our workforce, who will see approximately 8% raise. And then we're moving all full-time and OPS employees to a $16 an hour minimum wage. Another key element that you've directed is $7.8 million in systematic public safety initiatives with programs well-recognized such as Tempo, Summer Youth Employment Team, Neighborhood Safety Programs, et cetera. With industry-leading approaches, we've saved utility customers more than $91 million through affordable electric bills. The average electric bill for Tallahassee is at $127, which is well below the state average of $168 that other communities are seeing. This budget also furthers the key capital improvements that you've directed us, like the second senior center, the South Side Transit Center, the fire station at Lake Bradford Road, and then various numerous, and various numerous sidewalk and road projects. Cornerstone of this fiscal year 24 budget is increasing the police budget by 14%, or $9.5 million, to address violent crime. The recommendation is adding 20 new officers in advanced video software and artificial intelligence technology. This recognizes that over time, we have 41.5 fewer police officers per square mile when we compare ourselves against peer cities. We rank 11th out of those 12 cities when comparing spending- against peer cities. We rank 11th out of those 12 cities when comparing spending per capita, and then we operate with only 52% of the national average of officers per capita. This investment in public safety is an increase of .3500 mils, which is why we're asking for a property tax increase. That property tax increase of 4.45 mils, the property tax of 4.45 mils is a 43% decrease from the initial proposed increase that we talked to you in May and June of this year of .62 mils. We originally estimated 4.72 mils, moved that to 4.5 mils, advertised that, and we're glad to say that we've, as we've received final numbers, we've refined our estimates to actuals and sharpened the pencil as directed, which is why we're making the recommendation we have today. In a typical year, the increase in TPD's budget to, the police department's budget to maintain service levels is approximately $2 million. This accounts for salary increases, general operating costs, et cetera. As we've refined expenses and revenues, the gap needed to fund this investment in police, 20 new officers and technology, has decreased from $7.5 million to $5.2, which is the amount that would be raised by the 4.45 mils in property taxes. Ultimately, the majority of the property owners will see a monthly increase in a tax of $3.50 or less per month, and a majority of multifamily property units will see an increase of $2 or less. The fiscal year 24 budget continues the successes that we've accomplished in the strategic plan, is accomplished with efficient and effective cost-saving services. We're not recommending any changes in staff or services except in public safety, and we believe that there's reason change in the property tax rate for public safety as we've gotten final information and developed the final budget that is balanced. Unless there are further questions about the presentation specifically, the city attorney directs us through the process that will take the necessary steps for the public hearing, for the commission input and conversation.
Excellent. Any quick questions about just the presentation? Okay, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted in the agenda, the Sixth Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement for Fire and Emergency Medical Service is Resolution Number 23-R-19, Updating Fire Service Assessments and Fees, and Resolution Number 23-R-25, Updating Solid Waste Rates, will be introduced for approval as a part of this item. Initial public hearing on the city budget for FY '24. There are several steps that we have to go through tonight pursuant to the Truth in Millage Act. The Truth in Millage Act requires certain steps in a certain order and that certain things must be read into the record. Those steps are in the agenda item if you want to follow there, but the first item to be read into the record is the following. The proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2024 is 4.45 mils for the City of Tallahassee and 1 mil for the Tallahassee Downtown Improvement Authority, which millage rate is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.8571 by 15.93%. Resolution Number 23-R-27, which is provided to state the percentage that the tentative millage rate is above the rollback rate, is in Attachment 8. The next two steps is to allow public input on the city's proposed millage and the city's proposed budget. If anyone has signed up as participants, they can speak on either the proposed millage or the proposed budget for the city at this time, whether in person or electronically. In compliance with Florida Statute, Section 200.065, the date of this hearing was included in the TRIM notice, which was mailed to all property owners in August by the Leon County Property Appraiser to advertise this hearing. At this time, we can have speakers on the city's proposed millage and the proposed budget.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Cook, how many public speakers do we have on the proposed budget?
We have three speakers.
Okay, let's move forward.
The first is Caroline McCambell, and then Will Crowley. For those who were not here for the first portion of the meeting, each speaker will have three minutes for remarks. I'll give you a heads-up when you have about 30 seconds left, but there will be a light in front of the mayor that starts green and turns yellow and red as you begin.
Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Caroline McCambell, and I live at 9065 De Shetland Fun Road. My husband and I own rentals within the city of Tallahassee. Since 2013, 90% of our rentals have been single women with children. To keep rent affordable, we take care of most of our rental maintenance, and we increase rent minimally. Our renters are our customers. We value them. We recently increased our rents higher than usual due to a 200% increase in condominium fees, which includes insurance. So that rose from $525 per quarter to $916 per quarter. Several of our renters have had to take second jobs due to our increase. We ask that the city tax rate, maybe there's some wiggle room, not be increased from 4.1% to 4.5%, that we can provide and continue to provide affordable rent for our renters. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Will Crowley, followed by Delilah Pierre.
Your name and address for the record, please. Three minutes.
Will Crowley, 2308 Cypress Cove Drive. I stand today to oppose the tax hike. You say that this tax hike is necessary to fund a $10 million investment in public safety, but let's be clear, let's be honest. This is not a comprehensive public safety plan. It doesn't make our roads safer. It doesn't get people off the streets where they're vulnerable to assault and exploitation. It doesn't provide services to help families lift themselves out of poverty. All this tax hike does is move money out of our pockets into TPD's budget, who already accounts for the largest share of public dollars. It rewards an organization that is out of control and that is unaccountable to the people who fund it, the people they're sworn to defend. An organization where officers abuse amphetamines without consequence and train with murderous war criminals. The pain in this community is real. The violence is real. The demand for action is real. But the solution put forth by the majority of this commission is not real. It's not serious. It's a scam. It is a scam. They won't present any evidence that more law enforcement will reduce crime. They'll show peer cities, who spend more on law enforcement than us, have more cops, but they won't show that they've got lower crime rates. They won't commit to any metrics. They won't tell you what percent reduction in shootings do we expect with this investment. They don't tell us in five years, TPD is going to come back and ask for more money. What conditions are we going to hold them to, to say, "Well, you didn't do it with this money"? Excuse me, don't mean to be vandalizing public property. So, I saw housing folks come up here earlier, and I watched the mayor praise them for working miracles and stretching their resources. But instead of words, why don't we give them dollars? Imagine if we broke up that $10 million. And sure, half could still go to law enforcement, but what if we took the other half and gave a million dollars to housing? A million dollars to mentorship programs? A million dollars to make sidewalks safer and pedestrian infrastructure safer so people stop getting hit by cars?
You have 30 seconds.
Why haven't they directed staff to provide a comprehensive public safety plan? Because housing advocates aren't cutting checks to their reelection campaigns. And that's why this tax hike is going to pass. That's why vital community services will continue to go underfunded, and that's why the violence will continue unabated.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Delilah Pierre.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name's Delilah Pierre. I will not be sharing my address. Well, I wanted to say that funding, first and foremost, I want to say my name's Delilah. I'm the president of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee here in Tallahassee. We organize against police brutality. Overpolicing impoverished communities does not decrease crime. Funding impoverished communities reduces crime. The increase in property taxes in Tallahassee won't reduce crime. It will increase crime. The rise in crime and reduction in public safety does not exist in a vacuum. The rise in crime is directly linked to economic instability, housing insecurity, and poor mental health services here. I find it interesting that the city commission chooses to increase the police's budget by an extra $7.5 million. This budget that already is bloated and takes up a majority of our funding in this city, this budget that increases every year, this budget that takes up 1/3 of our city's entire budget, they decide to increase it by an extra $7.5 million. At the same time, they reduce the role of the Tallahassee Civilian Police Review Board to almost nothing. The civilian police review board that exists in Tallahassee doesn't even have the power to create an independent social media account or community organization outreach. Tell me how that is democratic. Tell me how that is a process for mechanism and accountability. And we know exactly what's going to happen. With the city of Tallahassee's policy being so short-sighted and flawed, this city continuing to limit policing oversight and accountability, this funding towards surveillance technology will increase the amounts of police misconduct, abuse, and negligence. And how many examples can we throw at you of your incompetence? Is it our chief of police speaking in a TPD police shirt at an anti-LGBTQ+ conference while our mayor claims to support the queer and trans community? Is it a TPD officer taking their child's Adderall prescription and then not being punished for that? Or is it TPD training with accused war criminal Eddie Gallagher? Or is it TPD allowing three officers to beat Jack Wes Kirkland, a black man in Tallahassee community, with a baton and face no consequences? The city loves to hold the line when it comes to public infrastructure, housing, and community resilience, or any core government services. But when it comes to actually helping the people in Tallahassee, it's a 3-2 vote. Jeremy Matlow and Jack Porter support our community and choose to vote against this property tax increase, while Curtis Richardson, Dinah Owen Cox, and John Daly think about their stakeholders and developers.
You have 15 seconds.
That's all they care about. So, I demand that the city reverse the recent revisions to the CPRB's policy procedures drafted by the city attorney, and TCAC demands that our city commissioners vote no on the 14% increase to property taxing for policing. And we invite all progressive organizations, individuals, and businesses to unite and join with us on September 27 at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall, so we can continue to struggle against this injustice.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, that's the last speaker we have on this item.
Okay. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on the proposed budget? Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Now it's time for speakers on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed millage and the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed budget.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed budget and millage rate?
No, sir.
Madam Attorney, is there anyone here that would like to speak on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed budget and millage rate? Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. And now it's time for commission discussion.
Okay, let's open it up.
I move acceptance of the recommendation to increase the millage.
Agreed.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor pro temp and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I know we've, I guess we're finally at the no-longer-making suggestion stage and the adoption stage, so I think we can have the real conversation about what we're doing. I had a couple of questions on what's being proposed. I know we went down a little bit on the millage rate, but that was largely because the value of property, that came back from the property appraiser increase. Is that accurate?
There were four actions that allowed us to change that. The half-cent sales tax came in slightly higher. There was an increase in property valuation that came from the property appraiser. We did then offset that with recognition of increased costs in the CDA.
Thank you. So, even though we got a lower millage rate, we're still asking people to pay more money on their tax bill every year because their property value has gone up. So, they're getting hit twice. They're getting hit on the increased value of their property based on the property appraisal, and they're getting hit twice that we're raising the millage rate. It said in the agenda item that one of the directives was to maintain spending levels. We are, in effect, increasing a lot of spending levels. Is that correct?
We are maintaining spending levels in the general fund, except for identifying the 5% raise for employees and recognizing the contracts for the police department.
Okay. So, we gave the directive at the beginning of the year to maintain spending level, so we didn't look for any cuts? We didn't go ask any department to look for savings and any auxiliary spending? Would that be fair?
No. We go through a budget process where we work collaboratively with the departments to identify what their systematic changes are, ways to create efficiencies, create effectiveness, work across departments so that we're reducing costs rather than cutting specific line item costs.
And how much cost reductions from last year over this year have you found?
Those cost reductions in the examples that we give for fleet, for special insurance reserve, for the, and then for the holding the line on a number of areas, but the resurfacing of lane miles, we're talking millions of dollars. $1 million in special insurance reserve, $4 to $5 million in insurance, I'm sorry, in the fleet replacement fund, and then the calculation for the asphalt costs are being incorporated in doing the same number of lane miles within the budget of public infrastructure. Now, we didn't speak to parks and recreation, maintaining the same level of service for additional parks with the same staffing levels. We didn't necessarily talk about Star Metro's cost per ridership being lower than other communities. We also haven't talked about providing more affordable housing than in past years. And then also, overall, the city in the last 15 years has not increased the number of employees, but is providing greater service levels.
And when I look at the budget and when I go through the checkbooks online, I see a lot of spending by departments all across the city that doesn't need to be spent. And that includes unnecessary travel that's not related to any type of professional development. There's tens and tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, in travel in our budget. You know, I see departments that have been created since 2018 under the city manager's office that are driving upwards of half a million dollars more additional spending. I look at our own budgets internally at the Mayor and City's Commission's office, and we can recognize areas that we could look for savings. And we're able to look at the budget and not having the tools that professional staff has and identify millions of dollars in cuts that we could make to the budget where we wouldn't have to raise taxes. It's not about what the additional spending. We could have a conversation of how we're going to prioritize it, but in an era right now where, I mean, housing rates are out of control, by raising these taxes, we are declaring a rental increase on everybody in our community. Their rent will go up next year. When their landlords get this property tax bill, they're going to raise rents. It's going to be a direct pass-through to their tenant. So, I mean, I appreciate everything that we're doing in housing, but with a stroke of the pen, we're raising every single rent in the city of Tallahassee. It's like, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, and it's not a good budget method. I want to talk about wages as well. What's the lowest hourly paid employee in the city of Tallahassee?
In fiscal year '24, it'll be $16 an hour.
That includes all part-time employees? If they get a paycheck from the city, they're going to get at least $16 an hour?
All full-time and OPS employees will make $16 an hour.
Are there employees in the city of Tallahassee that will make less than $16 an hour on the city payroll?
A handful, a handful of employees, yes.
And they're going to make the state minimum wage of $4 bucks?
They're part-time employees. They do work in parks and recreation by units of service. And so, if they do training, physical training, or umpire games... And so if they do training, physical training, or umpire games, or, those are not ones that we consider making minimum wage, but they are, they're paid by the activity that they involve themselves in.
I mean, they're employed by the city of Tallahassee. They do work, and we're saying the value of their labor is less than every other employee in the city of Tallahassee. That does not make sense to me. If we're gonna say the minimum wage of $16, let's take a step back. There's a 5% across-the-board pay increase for everybody except the $12-an-hour employees. What's the highest annual salary of an employee at the city of Tallahassee?
I would say it would be the city manager's salary.
Okay. So upwards of $230, $240, I'm, over 200, let's say over 200. At a 5% increase, everybody who makes $200,000 a year is going to get a $10,000 annual increase. And the people at the bottom in our city making $12 an hour, that's nearly 50% of their entire paycheck. People aren't working part-time because they don't need the money. They might only be eligible for a part-time employment. They might have only got a part-time job, but they're not doing it for the fun. They're doing it because they have bills to pay, they have rent to pay, they have utilities to pay. And it's just a slap in the face that will continue to maintain a $12 minimum wage for city of Tallahassee employees and give $10,000 raises to the people at the top. You know, over the course of the last few years, we've seen the top executive levels of salary balloon to where we're now paying twice as much for city managers and assistant city managers than every peer city that we compare ourselves to. And the people at the bottom are continuing to get less. The inequities between the top executive salaries, I mean, if we don't want to raise taxes on our community, let's pick a number, $100,000, $150,000, and say, "I'm sorry, you can't get a 5% salary increase this year because we're not gonna raise taxes." And if you wanna get a 5% salary increase this year, go dig into your budget and find some savings because we're not gonna pass this on to the people of Tallahassee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem.
On point.
You know, before we get started, I know that this is a very passionate issue, but let's continue the conversation as much as we possibly can without disturbances. Mayor Pro Tem.
As Commissioner Matlow was talking, I was thinking about my teen son when he was a teenager, working for City of Tallahassee Parks and Rec, umpiring a game on a Saturday. I didn't expect him to make $16 an hour. You know, he was out there for a few minutes. He didn't have any expenses. We had, we took care of his expenses. And I think that we need to remember that we do have young people, lifeguards, folks who are doing, who are doing this work. In fact, there's a shortage of lifeguards. We have young people who are working, you know, considered city of Tallahassee employees. They may be on the bottom, but they, like you say, they're being paid for the activity that they're doing and not on the clock for a paycheck to pay bills because some, now, granted, some do, but if they're working part-time, then, you know, one can believe that they may have another job somewhere else, and this is just a supplement of some sort, or perhaps it's a part-time job to try to work your way into doing a full-time job. I think we gotta be, we have to be careful when we start painting broad strokes about generalizations about who does what with the city of Tallahassee. The city manager's office is responsible for, what, about 3,000 or more individuals? You know, during the storm, nobody was worried about how much the city manager was making or how much of the people who were out there in the storm fixing and getting power back on, where there were other communities whose power was off for a number of days, our power was back on very quickly. So that means that there are people who are working to do this work all the time. Yesterday, we attended a ribbon-cutting for new affordable housing that required the collaborative work of the City of Tallahassee CRA and others to make this happen. Following that, I followed one of the city employee to a site where they're working to clear lots, to make sure we have places to build homes and put in the trust so that we can make our community a better place. My point is this, until you walk the mile in the shoes of the individuals who are doing this work, you have no idea what it takes to run a city of this size. I represent the city of Tallahassee with the Florida League of Cities, where there, in case jeopardy occurs. There are 411 cities, towns, and villages in the state of Florida. And Tallahassee is a shining example of what other cities would like to be doing. They're asking us what we're doing, and we're telling them. So we have to be very careful when you put your mouth on city employees and the people who support what we are doing. You never know when one may show up at your house because you need services. And so you wanna be careful, you wanna pay people according commensurate to the work that they do. I think that it is noble. Just a few years ago, we wanted to make sure that everyone who was full-time or OPS made at least $15 an hour. That's the national charge. We have gone beyond that. We're at $16 now, as we continue to work to make that happen because we know that things are happening and that things are more expensive. We've also absorbed the cost of asphalt to build the sidewalks and the streets that everyone wants to, wants to be able to go over, to fix the potholes, to do all those things. It takes money to do these things, but what we have been able to do over these past few years is to absorb those costs. But now, we're saying that we've absorbed all that we can absorb. We have a rise in a lot of crime and other things that comes from growing. We need more law enforcement. We cannot continue to operate a city of 200,000-plus people with 20 police officers on the street at night. That's not gonna work. It has worked thus far, but it's not gonna continue to work. And so to say that what we're doing is not where we need to be going growth-wise, when are we gonna do it? If we don't do it now, when will be the right time to do it? And as a person who rents, I have the option of whether I want to pass on any increase to my renter or not. Because I can, I may be able to help them in another way and not raise their rent. That is a choice of the person who's doing the renting. And I've done that. I've held the cost back. So to make an assumption that rent is gonna go up, you know, that's making a suggestion that it should go up. But if it goes up more than $5, it's not because of what the city of Tallahassee is asking for, it would be for some other reason for renters. So I think we just, we need to be very careful and not try to inflame or excite because it's taken all of this, this is a puzzle. This is not a one-way street. This is a puzzle. We've gotta take care of the, from the wound to the tune. And that means that all, everybody in between needs something different, and we've got to be able to try to provide that. And it takes money to be able to do it. And I wanna, again, say to you, you all have done what we've asked you to do. Robert, I'm the one who told you to sharpen your pencils, and you showed me your pencil down to a nub. We can't even buy you a new pencil because we can't, we, you know, getting beat up for trying to, trying to, you know, raise, you know, raise the quality of life. So thank you to your team that's there with you. Thank you very much for taking this hit, taking this heat and taking these hit, this heat and these hits. I would have believed that as a budget person, you all looked at the departments before we got to this process, even in the very beginning, because you monitor, you give us an update every quarter of where we are. So you didn't just start looking at the departments. Departments have been tightening up. Departments have been doing things. That's why we were able to build a doggone park for less than $3 million because we used the resources that we had available. While otherwise, you know, some folks would want millions of, other, four times that amount to build a park. We did it for $3 million. So at some point, you can no longer get blood from a turtle. You have to pay the piper. Thank you.
Any other comment? Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robert, just a couple of questions first. What will be the average, what will be the increase for the average homeowner? You mentioned that earlier. And for rental property?
Yes, thank you for that question, Commissioner. A majority of the property owners will see a monthly increase in their tax of $3.50, $3.50 or less.
And is that a home valued at $275,000 or 300, or 275,000 if we, if I'm correct?
Your recollection is accurate. We, when we first brought the proposal for the additional public safety officers, we were looking at an average home in the municipal cost comparison, and we looked at a $325,000 home with homestead exemption. And at 4.62 mils, that was a $7.50 increase. Since we've got the property tax rolls, we've gone into the rolls to see what the average is and what the majority is. And so we know now that that's $3.50 for majority. And almost 70% of homeowners will pay less than $5 an hour if you include that multifamily. It's $2.
$5 a month.
Yes.
You said an hour.
No, not an hour. Yeah, I was thinking about pay.
That's okay.
$3.50 for property owners and $2 for multifamily.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess, you know, my comments would be, first of all, I am a 50-year resident of the city of Tallahassee. I have spent half of my adult life, half, in public office, serving this community in one capacity or another. When my wife and I decided where we were gonna build our home, we didn't look to Kalaran. We didn't look to Golden Eagle, where we could have lived based on our income. We chose the south side of Tallahassee, which at the time, people were telling us, "Huh, you don't wanna do that. Why are you moving over there?" But we saw the potential, and we knew that if we were a part of the solution, rather than always looking for the problem, we could make a difference. And over the years, that has happened and is beginning to happen in the investments that we're seeing in the south side of Tallahassee and other traditionally neglected neighborhoods in this city. The one thing that Commissioner Matlow didn't tell you is that the city manager's salary is paid out of several different enterprises, not just the general fund. We have an airport that other cities don't have. We have a transit system that other cities don't have. We have, what else, what else am I looking for? Our electric utility.
Stormwater.
Stormwater. So his salary and his staff's salaries are paid out of all of those enterprise funds. We're talking about the general fund that pays for our police department. So you could put all of that together and not come up with what the police department has said they need in order for us to begin to make this community safer for all of its residents. Now, I tell you about the fact that I live on the south side of town, and I'll share this with you. The last three shootings and killings that have occurred in the city of Tallahassee have occurred within a half-mile of where I live. Okay? So I'm not talking about what I've heard or what somebody told me. I'm telling you what my neighbors and I want. We want police security. We want that because when I get ready to call, when somebody broke into my house or my car, I call the police and they responded. And we got a resolution. The person was caught who performed those acts in my neighborhood, where I have a neighbor next door to me that's on Oxygen and another down the street that's on a Walker. Yeah, I support this minimal tax increase. My house is valued at $223,000. I will pay about $1.50 to $2.00 per month additionally in property taxes, invested in public safety. The state just gave big raises to law enforcement officers. If we're not competitive in what we pay our law enforcement officers, and I don't give a damn what they give me for a campaign, I've never based my votes on what somebody gave me for a campaign. Search my record and find out if you ever will find a vote that I made based on what somebody contributed to my campaign. I resent the hell out of that.
Let's have some decorum, please. Commissioner Richardson, you have it.
We'll have it. So what I'm saying is, my neighborhood and the neighborhoods that surround me, we're willing to make that investment in public safety. If we lose our police officers to other agencies because they're paying more, what are we left with? I was looking at a video sent to me by one of our constituents. It was a town hall meeting on one of the television stations, and they asked the mayor of this particular city, I think it was Little Rock, Arkansas, "What are the things you all are doing to help solve the crime problem in your city?" We're investing in technology. And that's what we're asking here, to invest in the technology that the police department tells us they need. That's an investment in public safety. We're talking about hiring additional police officers where we are, based on comparable cities, we are far below where we need to be in terms of the number of police officers that we have. I have gotten calls from my neighbors saying, "We're the police officers. We never see them in our neighborhood." That's because we've got 20 per shift on the streets. I've gotten calls from business owners in the West Pensacola Street corridor. "We need more police officers patrolling our area," but we only have 20 in a town of 200,000, and they're asking for more police officers to secure our city. Will it cure crime? Absolutely it will not. Nobody in their right mind would think that hiring 20 additional police officers would cure a shooting that is unpredictable. But it sure will help towards making our community a safer community and will be part of our commitment to investing in public safety. I'm willing to do it. I've been a property owner for 30 years. Do I like paying property taxes? Who does like it? But if it's for something like investing in public safety, you better believe I'll pay an extra $1.50 to $2.00 to invest in, and to keep my neighbors and other citizens from throughout this community as safe as we possibly can and make them feel secure on the streets of our city. Yeah, I'll do it. So that's why I'm voting for this very nominal tax increase where our staff has done all that they can to hold the line on rising costs in departments throughout this. But what you have to realize as well, people look for world-class, a world-class park system. They want roads that are paved. They want sidewalks to make this city more walkable. And all the other services that we have come to enjoy and value in this community, those come with a cost. We've even invested in our animal services here in the city because we have individuals in this city who value that. So when you start to, "Well, we need to cut expenses here and cut expenses there," what are you willing to give up by cutting those expenses? We have, when we compare ourselves to other cities, our expenses are lower than most. If not, we're at the very bottom. Our milledge rate is among the lowest in comparable cities in the state of Florida. So if we are willing to invest in public safety in this community, I think this, what is being proposed here tonight, will move us in that direction. But it's gonna take all of us, all of us, wherever we live in this community, to address this issue, and it ain't unique to Tallahassee. It's not unique to the state of Florida. Based on this town hall, television town hall that I viewed recently, it's a problem all over this nation, and everybody's trying to figure out how to come to grips with it. But I think this is a good investment. I'm willing to make it. My neighbors are willing to make it. Neighborhoods around where I live are willing to make it, and I think all of us should do it on behalf of this great city, this all-America city of Tallahassee that we live in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Let me check in real quick. Commissioner Porter, would you like to speak before we start doubling back?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree, we should talk about-
And I agree, we should talk about what we're willing to cut. I've put substantial cuts that I think we can make up the city of Tallahassee on the table. You know, I would hope my colleagues would make suggestions for cuts, and I hope, I would wish staff would bring us suggestions for cuts as well. Maybe we don't agree with them, but we should have options of where we can cut before we raise taxes. And I do want to say, public safety is one of the first foundations of our budget. Let's not conflate funding public safety with a tax increase. In a city with a billion-dollar budget, if you did a zero-based budget, you'd start with public safety. And when it's funded, then you build your budget after that. But to put it at the top and act like we need to raise taxes for public safety is a dishonest conversation because we can build a budget within our means. I mean, the people at home right now, their wages are largely staying stagnant. They're having to work within their means. And we're saying, not only are we not going to work within our means, we're going to reach into your pocket and ask you for a little bit more to shore up our budget. It's just, it's not right. And I know people want to make this about public safety, but it's just frankly not true. It's not based in reality. It's not based in how budgets can be built from the ground up. And it's not based in the spending priorities of our city where we know we can make cuts. And I do want to clarify, Robert, what fund is management and assistant city managers paid out of?
So we, the city manager's office is in the general fund, and we go through a cost allocation process to allocate that to all 14 funds. And so city manager's office, strategic innovation, resource management, any of those areas that are paid from the general fund are then recouped from the enterprise funds.
Sure.
And not only in their internal service funds, but in their allocated accounts.
And so if our management pay was on pace with our peer cities, which are 50% less, we'd have to allocate less money to pay for them?
So when we look at pay, we look at the market. I know we can't compare ourselves against the private market because we are providing public services. So we know we are not going to rise to that level. But we do look at what other communities provide as services, and we feel like what we are providing, what we're paying our scientists, our engineers, our attorneys, our linemen, our public administrators who've come up through the ranks and become managers, a wage that's competitive in the market.
Sure. When we look at the same comparison cities that we do our municipal cost comparison to, and we request their assistant city managers' pay, their city managers' pay, put them all together, we're paying twice as much, sometimes three times as much. Sometimes in other cities, assistant city managers are also the fire chief. You know, what I'm saying is, our upper management level of pay is way out of step with our peer cities across the state. And the only other point I'll make, going back to the people making $12 an hour in our rec center, it's not just people looking for money for the fun of it. You know, we did an event at Dade Street Community Center. I asked a woman how much money she made. I think it was $11 or $12 an hour at the time. How many years have you worked here? It was something like 15-plus years. That's not something you just show up for because you want a little pocket change. My first job, when I was 14, 15 years old, was for the city of Tallahassee. I got my first opportunity in a rec center as a counselor at Dade Street Community Center. My mom was a single mother of three kids. She was unemployed. She was on Section 8. I got paid. What did my paycheck do? It bought food for my family. The lights were cut off. It went to help turn the lights back on. So to act like people are showing up for work because these jobs aren't as important, they're not engineers, they're not city managers, those jobs are important. Their hour is important, and they should be compensated fairly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to come to you in a second, Mayor Pro Tim, because I respectfully need you to withdraw your motion in a second. The city attorney needs to walk us through a series of motions to make sure that we're in the proper light. And first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out, who spoke on the budget, and those that are interested. I know that the budget is very important. It's the most important thing that we do on an annual basis, and by law, we have to have a balanced budget. And the budget is extremely complicated. It really is. And it's easy to sit up here and throw out rhetoric. There were some statements that were made that are simply not true. Now, I'm not going to dig into the details of it, but I want to end on a positive note. And I want to say this once again. We're basically dealing with 14 mini-budgets that combined to make a $1.2 billion budget. And I want to thank our budget team, Robert, and every single one of you. You are the greatest professionals dealing with the most intricate municipal budget. You are nationally recognized and award-winning for your excellence. This is all you do, every day, all year long. And I want you to know that as your mayor, I have enjoyed working with you even through this very tough budget season, as I have the past four budget seasons as well. And I really appreciate all the hard work that you do. Now, with that, Mayor Pro Tim, if you wouldn't mind withdrawing your motion.
Motion withdrawn.
I withdraw the second.
Okay. And now let me turn it over to the city attorney to walk us through and put us in the proper posture.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a motion to approve the city's tentative milage rate of 4.45 mils as set forth in Resolution Number 23-R-27, recognizing the proposed aggregate milage rate is more than the rollback rate of 3.8571 by 15.93%?
Mayor Pro Tim?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Madam Attorney.
Is there a vote on that?
You want me to go ahead and take the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And it passes 3-2 with Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Matlow in dissent. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the city's tentative budget as stated in Resolution Number 23-R-28?
So moved.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And it passes on a 3-2 vote with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. Madam Attorney.
Is there a motion to approve the Downtown Improvement Authority's tentative milage rate of 1 mil as stated in Resolution Number 23-R-27?
So moved.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0.
Is there a motion to approve the Downtown Improvement Authority's tentative budget as stated in Resolution Number 23-R-28?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney.
Is there a motion to approve the negotiated healthcare rates with Capitol Health Plan for FY '24?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0. Madam Attorney.
To summarize, the City Commission has tentatively approved the milage rate for both the city and the DIA and the expenditures and obligations of the city of Tallahassee and the DIA for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024, designating the sources of revenue and appropriations. The titles to the resolutions setting forth the City Commission's approvals are as follows. Resolution Number 23-R-27, a resolution establishing the milage rate for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024, as 4.5, 4.5 mils, and for the city of Tallahassee, and 1 mil for the Downtown Improvement Authority, which is greater than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.8571 by 15.93% and provided an effective date. And Resolution Number 23-R-28, a resolution adopting the operating and capital budgets for the city of Tallahassee and the operating budget for the Downtown Improvement Authority for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024, designating the sources of revenue and set appropriations and provided an effective date. A public hearing on the final budget will be held on Wednesday, September 27, 2023, at which time Resolution Number 23-R-R-27, setting the milage rate, and Resolution Number 23-R-28, setting the budget, will be approved. Continued upon commission action, the resolutions that require budget summary advertisement will be adjusted for all issues resolved as a part of this agenda item that may affect the fiscal year 2024 budget. Separate from the approval of the city of Tallahassee and Downtown Improvement Authority tentative milage rates and tentative budgets, at this time, the City Commission is scheduled as a part of this item to approve the Sixth Amendment to this interlocal agreement for fire and emergency medical services and two proposed resolutions regarding fire service assessments and fees and the solid waste rate changes. The first item is to approve the Sixth Amendment to the interlocal agreement for fire and emergency medical services. Are there any public speakers on this item?
Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Seeing none. Madam Attorney.
Discussion by commissioners.
Any open discussion? Madam Attorney, put us in the proper posture for a motion.
Is there a motion for approval of the Sixth Amendment to the interlocal agreement for fire and emergency medical services?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney.
The next item is to approve the first of two resolutions. Resolution Number 23-R-19, approving updated fire service assessments and fees, which reads, "Resolution Number 23-R-19, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, relating to fire service assessments and fees, providing for the provision of fire services charges, facilities, and programs throughout the city of Tallahassee, Florida, imposing a fire services fee on government property, describing the method of apportioning fire services costs for government property among government property, providing for the collection of the fire services fee on the City of Tallahassee Utility Bill, imposing a fire service assessment on non-government property, describing the method of assessing fire services, assess costs against non-government property, providing for the collection of the fire service assessment on the city utility bill, and providing an effective date. Are there any public speakers regarding this item?
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the fire services fee? Seeing none. Madam Attorney.
Discussion by commissioners.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Attorney.
Is there a motion to approve a Resolution 23-R-19, adopting updated fire service assessment and fees?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney.
The second and final resolution is Resolution Number 23-R-25, adopting updated solid waste rates. Resolution Number 23-R-25, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, establishing the schedule of residential and commercial rates for solid waste services pursuant to the Code of General Ordinances, Section 21-512, and provided an effective date. Are there any public speakers regarding this item?
Mr. Clerk, any public comment?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none. Madam Attorney.
Any discussion by commissioners?
Any discussion by commissioners? Seeing none. Madam Attorney.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 23-R-25, adopting updated solid waste rates?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney.
This concludes any required action on this item. Once again, the final public budget hearing is scheduled for September 27, 2023.
Excellent. Do we have any other items coming before us at this public hearing?
No, we do not.
Okay. We are on unengaged speakers. Mr. Clerk, do we have unengaged speakers this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We have about 20 or 25 speakers.
Okay. Let's get to it.
We will begin with Bernard Stevens, followed by Nancy Taylor.
Excellent. Your name and address for the record, please.
All right. My name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens, Jr. My address is 300 South Adam Street. My brothers and my sisters, it's me again, your humble servant. Our First Amendment fundamental freedoms. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. I was taught, if you take the content out of the context, you're left with a con. Now, the Citizens Advisory Police Council is by the Tallahassee Police Department. It has a holistic effort to expand transparency and strengthen community bonds. Now, in 2021, the Leon County Sheriff Office arrested 1,618 individuals. Tallahassee Police Department, 4,278 individuals. The Leon County Sheriff arrested 127 juveniles. In 2021, Tallahassee Police Department arrested 429 juveniles. And suddenly, there came a sound from heaven as a Russian violent wind, and it had feel the whole house where they were sitting. Acts 2 and 2. What makes a church the church? Three points for your consideration, as I'm on this lady for three minutes of time. Number one, the requirements to make it holy. Number two, the foundation of the church. Number three, the transition of the church from a basic frame to a healing place. This church is on top of the church. There are certain challenges that doesn't require 20-plus years to rectify. Scoot your arrogant selves over, it's time to go. If it was good for any other city employee to be terminated, you are not exempt from being terminated yourself. This church located 300 South Adam Street is designed for the people, not on the people. The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, for he has anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor, whoo, and bring healing to the land. The Holy Ghost makes me accountable to my community. I can't claim I have the Holy Ghost and people in my community are hurting. I can't profess I have the Holy Ghost and oblivious about everything transpiring in Tallahassee, in our state and our nation. Woo, the Honorable Ellen Brown, terminated due to retaliation, discrimination, use of executive authority to circumvent negligent conduct. If the policy and procedure of an individual is not recognized immediately, there is a direct problem with leadership. Let's not even forget, I heard a voice from heaven saying, stand up for righteousness, stand up for justice, stand up for truth. Actual sin is a sin ordinary of the word and consists of evil acts, whether of thought, word, or deed. Original sin is morally vitiated condition in which one finds itself at birth as a member of fraud, vitiates a contractual relationship with the people.
20 seconds.
Thank you, sir, for my 20 seconds. Sister Cox, you sat here and you gave a rebuke to the people. You belong to Bethel, where you serve up under your pastor who just bought land over there on Ridge Road. So quite naturally, you in it for the money, so you his mouthpiece. Every single photo op is done on your church. We know who the police department run by. That's why you do what you do. There's nobody giving you a false claim. And do not gaslight any citizen no more, telling them that what they're saying is a lie because the truth will always come out. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Nancy Taylor, and then Floyd Fisher.
Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nancy Taylor, 2909 Reserve Drive, Apartment 2322. Prepared speeches said, "Good afternoon." I guess now it should be "good evening." Here to speak today in protest of the fraternity house going in at 525 East College Avenue. And I'm here to speak with my mother. Members of my family have lived in the 500 block of East College Avenue for 60 years. My great aunt purchased her home at 525 East College Avenue in 1963. My parents purchased their home at 531 East College in 1966. Upon her death in 1996, my great aunt left her home to my mother. My mother, at the age of 86, still resides in her home on College Avenue. In 2014, my daughter moved into the home that was originally owned by my great aunt. She and her husband continue to live there. Both of these homes are directly across the street from the fraternity. While the fraternity has yet to be granted certificate of occupancy and has not officially moved in, they have begun to host fraternity events at the house. These events have resulted in very loud music, foul language, and illegal parking. Loud music easily exceeds the acceptable limits outlined in the city's noise ordinance. Residents even in the 600 block of East College Avenue have been able to hear the music inside their front doors. If the music can be heard inside homes a block away, just imagine how loud it is for my family who live across the street. Attendees to a fraternity event held last Saturday illegally parked on both sides of College Avenue, reducing traffic to one lane. This lasted for over an hour. They have illegally parked in the lots of nearby apartment buildings. They have also attempted to park in my daughter's driveway until her husband told them they had to move. They have also repeatedly blocked or partially blocked her driveway. Several evening this week, buses have been shuttling potential pledges to the house and have remained idling on College Avenue for periods of time, blocking an entire lane yet again. And they're at it, I hear, again tonight. yet again, and they're at it, I hear, again tonight. And all of this has been caused by a group that has not officially moved in. My mother has always wanted to remain in her home. I grew up in that home. I learned to ride my bike there. My first date picked me up from that home. My daughter visited her grandparents there. My mother, who is famous for her pound cakes, has made thousands of pound cakes in that home. She cared for my dying father in that home. That home has happy memories for all of us.
You have about thirty seconds.
It has always been a peaceful neighborhood until the fraternity arrived last week. Now the memories being made there are not so pleasant. While I know there may not be anything we can stop this, I would like your assurance that when the noise level is too high, or people are illegally parking, and you have to call the police, I want your assurance that they will respond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Taylor, I want to make sure that we've got several members of our TPD Command staff here. We'll connect with them, and then I'm hoping that you've got the update on where we are relative to the permitting. It sounds like you do. I want to make sure our Growth Management Director speaks to you as well. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Floyd Fisher, and then Harry Brown.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Floyd Fisher. Good evening. I have a complaint. I'm having a problem with the animal shelter. I know this is not the right place probably to come, but I know nowhere else to go. I'm tired of them riding me. You know how you get on a horse and ride a horse? Well, that's the way I feel that they're doing me. I wish that you would have someone come out and talk to me, and talk to them, and straighten this out. It's a real bad problem, and I think I should not have to be going through this, and I shouldn't have to come in here and see you all to try to get them off of my back. I thank you.
Yes, sir. In the corner is Ashley Edwards, who is Director of Parks and Rec. That the animal shelter falls underneath. I encourage you to speak with her. Our next speaker, please.
Harry Brown, and then we will hear from Frank Terraforma.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Harry Brown, fifty-four thirty-one Crump Road. I'm here to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. I started doing this because every time I came up here before Scott Maddox, he said all I did was lie. I was extremely dismayed at the last commission meeting to have to listen to nine minutes of a poem that made no sense. Now, Mayor Daley, please don't interrupt me like you did the last meeting, taking away from my little valuable time, and did not offer to give me one second back. I have never seen equal treatment in this government. Anita Favors took thirty-one thousand dollars of my severance pay and said that she had discretion and could do what she wanted to. Yet, when her son was released from a seven-year, seven-and-a-half-year prison sentence, I was told that he was placed in a sixty thousand dollar a year position at the Solid Waste Division. That is the reason she fought so hard to have the lock removed from the application regarding previous confinement. Let's get to Scott Maddox, who had me spend twenty thousand dollars from my budget to renovate his office, to build his man cave in the middle of the office workers' right in the middle of the commission complex. The secretaries in the outer office knew what was going on in his office, so they called my two female custodial workers to enter the office unannounced. They reported to me what they saw. Scott Maddox was engaged in sexual intercourse with his secretary on top of his desk with his pants around his ankles, while she was bottomless on top of his desk. Anita had the two ladies sign false affidavits, saying I was lying. One of the women felt extremely remorseful and went crying to her pastor regarding her sin of lying. Scott approached me the next day, saying that he wanted the locks changed to his office, and only wanted the night shift supervisor and me to have keys to his office. He also told me that he didn't think Lily should be here. That's when I informed him that she had as much right to be here as he and me. He turned red as fire and walked away. That is when all hell broke out for me. He later read from a three-page document at the diastate.
You're at thirty seconds.
Wearing a gun, stating that all I did while employed with the City of Tallahassee was sexually harass women. In a deposition, my attorney asked Sharon O'Fahoney, who had her prepare the document. She replied, my boss. He asked, who is your boss? She replied, Anita Favors. And I will do anything my boss asks me to do. My attorney said you tried to make Mr. Brown look like a sexual predator.
You're at three minutes.
Every citizen in this city should thank Mr. Ervin Jackson.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ervin Jackson, for what he did for this city. Scott Maddox was the biggest nemesis in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Next speaker is Frank Terraforma, Mayor, and followed by Marvin Goldstein.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Frank Terraforma, six forty-one East College Avenue. I've been a resident at that home for twenty-two years and a city resident for thirty years. It's hard to believe how time has gone by. But I'm here on behalf of this situation with this newly blossomed fraternity home that sprung up at five twenty-four East College Avenue. The situation, we realized what was happening on Thursday, and immediately on Friday, we began to be in touch with city staff, specifically Mr. Reddick, who's been very responsive, and we really do appreciate his responsiveness. However, you know, I'd like this group here, the city manager and the Commissioners, to look at this in two angles. Number one, we have an administrative situation here, and we also have a policy situation here. On the administrative front, the staff was caught off guard. This building was an office, it was a house a long time ago, built in the thirties. It became an office. The owner told the city that he was converting this to a residential duplex and got permits to do a conversion to a duplex, and never told the city that his intention is to have a fraternity house. So we have this fraternity. There is no certificate of occupancy. There's never been a site plan or a site plan review by city staff. It is certainly not possible that anybody with a residential building in CU forty-five can just decide to have a fraternity house overnight without any approval, and that's the situation we're in today. We have this fraternity that is doing whatever they want to do without any permission from the city. So that's the administrative front on this. On the policy side of this, I really would like you to realize what we have here. We have this part of College Avenue in CU forty-five. I'm in RP two on the east side of Franklin, but I'm sort of a leader in this neighborhood, and I'm deeply concerned about this situation. So we have this fraternity house burgeoning in a CU forty-five, and in many ways, you know, you have this rooming house ordinance here in the City of Tallahassee, and that's great for people in a residential area, but in many ways, this fraternity is actually more, causes more trouble than a rooming house does. As we know, fraternities have rush, they have initiation, they have chapter meetings, they have socials, that people live in the home. There's no street parking on East College Avenue. That's the policy situation that we have, is that the zoning does permit a fraternity house here, but the reality is, is that it's being plopped in the middle of a neighborhood. We have a lawyer whose office is across the street. She told me last night she had to leave her office because she couldn't work because the music was too loud.
You have fifteen seconds.
We have another neighbor who said when his lease is up in December, he's gone from that neighborhood. So if we believe in downtown redevelopment, you really need to look at how fraternities can be allowed in CU forty-five and just be allowed to flourish in any spot that they so desire to be. Thank you so much. We appreciate your service, all of you up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Marvin Goldstein, followed by Delilah Pierre.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address, please.
Marvin Goldstein, six oh two East College Avenue. I've been a resident of Tallahassee for fifty-five years. I live on that corner she was speaking on, the six hundred block. I live right across the street in an RP two neighborhood, about one hundred feet away from the fraternity house. Mine's RP two. Right across the street is the CU forty-five. I'm very familiar with the ordinances and the zoning issues and everything, but just the other night, I could hardly get to FSU from my home because there was a school bus blocking the road headed toward the front gates of Florida State University, cars endlessly on both sides of the street, and people also walking, which is fine, of course, with no animus toward any of the fraternity people, or the kids, I call them. I used to be one. But it is really destructive what's going on in that neighborhood. I'm the one she was talking about it on my front porch. I can hear music that I'm not really familiar with too much, and I'm very familiar with music. It is, it's a problem. I looked carefully again over the CU forty-five. It sounds like it's permissible, but the way they're going about it is a little bit sneaky, and I hope that somebody can do something about it. I really don't want to see police a hundred feet from my house every other night on the street. It's just not, it's not good. The last thing I'd like to say, I'm in support of doing something about this. The only answer I have to this noise is to open my windows and play my piano really loud. Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin.
Our next speaker, please.
Delilah Pierre, and then Spencer Leone Brass.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Delilah Pierre. I'm the president of the Tastic Media Action Committee. I will not be sharing my address. I'm here because I want to speak in favor of our city commission creating an LGBTQ plus sanctuary city in Tallahassee. If y'all know anything that's going on in Florida's politics, right-wing politicians occupy the majority of offices around the entirety of the state, and they've been making massive attacks on racial equality, on queer and trans people, on the right to abortion. Since y'all are supposed to be Democrats and supporting, in my opinion, what's supposed to be a more progressive option, I ask that you do more than make proclamations for the LGBTQ plus community, for queer and trans people. I ask that you take actual action to protect us. It is already extremely difficult to gain access to gender-affirming care in the City of Tallahassee. There are almost no resources to help queer and trans people, especially if you don't have insurance or the resources or funding you need. The Don't Say Gay bill, these other bills, they're telling queer and trans people, don't come to Florida. There aren't progressive people here, and I don't believe that's true, because I love the City of Tallahassee. I genuinely and truly think that the people here are kind and care about their neighbors and the people around them. That being said, action needs to be taken by the Democrats in this state to stand up against Ron DeSantis and to stand up against his backward policies. Y'all, as a municipal city, have the power to pass a resolution that prevents police officers from doing things like arresting trans people for using the quote-unquote "wrong bathroom," fully enforcing the powers of the Stop Woke Act and Don't Say Gay bill. Y'all can speak to FSU's Board of Trustees and Leadership and tell them what direction they should move in. Y'all can influence them, but you choose not to because you think, honestly, like cowards. You think only about your stakeholders and developers, about the money and resources that y'all can get, instead of thinking about your community members and what they need. You, John Daley, have taken credit for the conversion therapy ban that was created by the Tastic Community Action Committee. In a newspaper article the Tallahassee Democrat wrote, they didn't even mention the fact that the language was created by Catherine Lane and that it was proposed by Lakey Love, an organizer who no longer lives in Florida.
You're at thirty seconds.
If you're going to at least take credit for our work, at least do something. Make a real resolution to support queer and trans people in Tallahassee, and make it so that police officers targeting queer and trans people who use the wrong bathrooms, make that the lowest priority of the police in Tallahassee. Do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Spencer Leone Brass, and then Steve DeBarry.
Name and address for the record, please.
Spencer Leone Brass, twenty-twenty West Pensacola Street. First, I want to start by thanking Commissioner Williams-Cox. She took immediate action at the last meeting to wrap her head and all of our bodies around the issues that we're facing every day on the west side of Tallahassee, so I want to thank you for that. And I want to share that last night, Leon County Commission echoed many of the same sentiments this board said at the last meeting, and we're aiming toward a joint approach with the city to analyze the crime statistics of Leon County to come up with recommendations to solve them. So in the spirit of tonight being all about budgets and monies for the city, I want to bring to your attention another property on West Pensacola. Last time, I talked about the property value demise that is happening of nearly fifty million dollars of the social twenty-seven-hundred apartment complex. They're still struggling with this today, and I want to share with you the issues that are occurring at Capital Reserve, formerly known as Benchmark West. This may ring a bell. It's one of the locations of the many shootings that we've had occur in the last two weeks. This complex was purchased by a very excited group out of Maryland for six point two five million dollars last November. They've since added hundreds of thousands, I think it's actually millions, in renovations to the property to support the largest economic driver in the city, FSU, TCC, and FAMU and their students. To date, they've lost over seventy-five thousand dollars in furniture and fixtures at their property and are operating at twenty-seven percent occupancy. They're losing over sixty-five thousand dollars a month in loss of rent due to people not signing leases or breaking them when they move in because the surrounding area simply is not safe. If they couldn't rent these units prior to the shooting, they certainly can't do it now. At the last meeting, there were several things that staff were directed to look into, and again, thank you, Commissioner Williams-Cox, including the audit of the Carney Center and their involvement in serving the needs of the unhoused population of our community. I ask, what is the status of this audit? If you ever find yourself in need of some fresh air, I'd like to invite you all and your families to come to Weston Square at the corner of Pensacola and Ocala. Park your car and take a walk. Walk from Pensacola and Ocala to Tallahassee Community College. When you're done with that walk, I'm curious what your perception of the safety in that area will be. And let me remind you, this area is one that you all have zoned to be full of students through university transition zoning, and further, those that walk, bike, scooter, or use public transportation through your MMTD overlay district. As always, we remain steadfast and at the complete disposal of the city to support our police department and various staff members as we work towards solving these issues so we don't lose Pensacola Street and the potential it has for tax revenues and booming development forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
With my reading glasses on, our next speaker is Shane Dabney. Doesn't resemble what I said at first, but Shane Dabney, followed by Jennifer Pierce.
Thanks for joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
Shane Dabney, five seventy-two East Call Street. My family and I reside in Franklin Park in a home we purchased a few years ago. We lived near the new Pi Lambda Phi fraternity house, five twenty-four East College Avenue. And I have specific concerns about this that I believe warrant your attention. Our neighborhood has seen a surge in families with young children, including my own. We frequently walk or ride our bikes to nearby Cascades Park, crossing College Avenue in close proximity to the fraternity's property. I'm concerned about the risks introduced by an increase in college student drivers, particularly those with a reputation for distracted driving and/or alcohol abuse. This poses safety issues for many people who walk and jog in our neighborhood, as well as for families like mine, whose children often ride scooters and bikes or walk to the park. Secondly, the potential for noise disturbances, especially late at night, is a growing concern for neighborhood families, particularly when we're trying to put our children to bed. Recent experience has revealed that this concern is justified. Lastly, I am concerned about littering, public drunkenness, and disorderly conduct. With the presence of a fraternity, this is all but guaranteed. So far, at least two permanent outdoor beer pong tables have been set up in the front yard of the property. While this alone may be unproblematic, it gives us reason to expect future activities to align with the party culture commonly associated with fraternities, and betrays a certain disregard for community norms, order, and aesthetics. Given these concerns, I propose the following. First, reevaluate the zoning of this specific area. As a zoning, as a housing policy research manager at the Devoe Moore Center at FSU, I understand zoning aimed at promoting infill and urban economic development. However, I believe it's crucial to balance these goals with community well-being. Second, consider implementing stricter noise ordinances that apply to all neighborhood residents. Additionally, proper enforcement of these ordinances, or at least existing noise ordinances, should be ensured. should be ensured. Third, consider implementing ordinances specifically to prevent or deter litter and trash problems commonly associated with fraternity activities. Fourth, advocate for measures aimed at ensuring pedestrian safety, particularly in light of the concerns I've outlined regarding increased traffic and the potential for impaired or careless driving. In conclusion, the presence of this fraternity poses specific tangible challenges that are already manifesting in ways that impact our daily lives. These are not hypothetical concerns. They are real issues that require immediate attention and thoughtful action.
You have 15 seconds remaining.
I respectfully request that you consider this seriously and that you balance your broad planning objectives with the day-to-day realities we face. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next is Jennifer Pierce, followed by Robert Nahum.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Pierce, 1383 Conservancy Drive East. Commissioners and city leadership, I'm here before you as a business owner, a local resident, and as a mom of five. I brought my wrong speech up. Can I have my 10 seconds back to go grip my right one?
Yeah. Go grab your right speech. Curious what speech that was.
That was the one from last night at the county commission meeting. Okay, so we're gonna start over. Sorry about that. Thank you for your patience with that. City commissioners and city leadership, I'm here on behalf of SHS management and all of our associated businesses and properties owned along the Pensacola corridor to continue to advocate for the needed changes along the West Pensacola corridor and the surrounding neighborhoods. Last month, many of you, many of us stood before you and outlined the crime we are experiencing. The commitment that was made last month was a great start, and we are here to follow up with those efforts. The mayor asked for research on several topics, and I look forward to hearing those results. Thank you, Commissioner Williams Cox, for your leadership, excuse me, in organizing the upcoming meeting between Leon County Sheriff's Department, Tallahassee Police Department, yourself, and several of our stakeholders. I also want to thank TPD Chief of Staff Mike Salesky for always being available to discuss issues and consistently providing quality service when we call him. While we left last month's meeting feeling encouraged, we are compelled to continue to come to these meetings to ensure that this issue remains at the forefront. The actions of a few are harming us all. Shootings, break-ins, assaults, trespassers, garbage everywhere are now sadly the norm. The economic impact will continue to be catastrophic. This can be stopped. This can be reversed. The residents of this area are worth protecting. The businesses in this area are worth protecting. Please continue to make this a priority and make this important corridor between FSU and TCC something we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Robert Nahum, and then next will be Donna Cotterell.
Your name and address for the record, please.
It's Bobby Nahum. I live at 576 East Call Street. So, I'm here today to discuss the fraternity that has recently moved into the house at 524 East College Avenue and the concerns that I have with the fraternity residing at this location. I'm a Tallahassee native, local realtor here for the past 17 years as well. I live downtown on Call Street, where my wife and I have been since 2018 when we bought our home. Over the past decade or so, we have seen a real revitalization in this downtown area due to the improvements made, including Cascades Park. As a result of all the improvements and the money that the city has put into the downtown area, people have been moving back into downtown into droves. People have been renovating homes, building new homes, and new businesses have been flocking to, to the downtown. However, with the fraternity moving into our neighborhood in the heart of downtown and the fact that the zoning permits a fraternity in this area, it makes me concerned that all this improvement that we've made in the downtown area, it's gonna, it's gonna backtrack over the next several years if we let this continue. Where the new fraternity resides at 524 East College Avenue, it's located on a city block that is primarily residential homes, residential apartments, and a few professional offices mixed in. There's a small residential building on one side of the frat house, three single-family homes on the other side of the frat house, including two brand-new constructed homes that were bought within the last three years. Single-family homes, professional offices, and residential apartments both across from and behind the frat house. Having a fraternity next to these types of properties is gonna cause a huge disturbance to the nearby residents and to traffic pedestrians and to the overall harmony of the neighborhood. Can you imagine paying nearly $600,000 for a brand-new home and then having a fraternity move in next to you? Since fraternity moved in, we've had all kinds of problems. There have been multiple noise complaints made, illegally parked cars, kids congregating in the front yards, beer pong tables, buses parked in front of the house, et cetera, et cetera. And I actually emailed y'all a video of the bus that was in, in front of the house. It was just parked there, blocking the, the lane and blocking traffic, literally like four cars just like parked right behind the bus waiting for it to move. With all the crime in the city, our police department has better things to do than be responding to constant noise complaints. So, I'm asking for two things. First thing, change the zoning in the area. South of Tennessee, north of Gaines, east of Bruno, and west of Magnolia, completely ban fraternities and sororities from being able to reside in that area. Number two, enforce the rules that are on the book to the fullest. Make sure that property owner has complied with all zoning permits and all the other rules necessary to house a fraternity and enforce the noise ordinances and make them even stricter if possible, and also enforce parking and blocking traffic in the area. So, look forward to y'all's help.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker.
Donna Cotterell, to be followed by Nancy Stedman.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Tallahassee City Commission. My name is Donna Cotterell. I'm a resident of the Bond neighborhood, and I stand before you today as the president and founder of Endaba Theater and Associates. Before I begin, I want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to Commissioner Matlow. His unwavering support for organizations like Endaba is nothing short of remarkable. He has not only been a sponsor of Endaba, but has also extended a helping hand during our financial challenges. Commissioner Matlow's commitment to our community is a shining example of what public service should be, and for that, we are eternally grateful. Today, I come before you with justice on my mind. Justice for our children, justice for our community, and justice for the ancestors who toiled to transform this territory into our state's capital. Some say that justice is love in action, and I ask, what does justice look like in a community grappling with gun violence? What does justice look like in action? Justice looks like what Commissioner Matlow has consistently done for countless organizations in our underserved communities. He has shared his resources where they're needed most. As we approach the end of fiscal year 2023, we are acutely aware that the remaining funds in the city's budget must be allocated before September 30th. This is a pivotal moment for our city to demonstrate justice. Endaba Theater and Associates is not just a theater company. We are a force for positive change. This summer, we employed four full-time staff members who worked tirelessly, often putting in 10-hour days. We had a dedicated part-time team member, two landlords who leased space to us, six independent contractors, and a food vendor who played a crucial role in making our summer theater camp a resounding success. Today, I stand before you asking to help us stop the financial strain and fully fund the camp we held this past June. The camp made a profound impact on the lives of 16 children who participated. How do I know we made an impact? I know because I was once a theater camp kid myself at the age of 15. And that experience changed the trajectory of my life. Now, I have the privilege of giving back to our community in a way that can change the lives of Tallahassee's children.
You have 30 seconds.
I'm here in honor of my great-great-grandparents, Prince and Lucy Griffin, whose spirit I can almost hear crying out for justice. My father left a legacy here, and in memory of my mother, Ethel Pearl, I implore the city commission to find justice for those who've poured their hearts into the lives of our precious children. Commissioners, it's time to invest our future, to invest in the potential of these young minds. It's time to put our money where our commitment to justice truly lies. I urge you to allocate the necessary funds to support the summer theater camp that has already left an indelible mark on our youth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next is Nancy Stedman. She'll be followed by Maria Greco.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Stedman, and I live at 527 East Call Street. Thank you, first of all, for having us speak here. I did not bring a prepared speech. However, I did do some work today on, and it's really amateur, I know it, but all of you should have a copy of this. Everything that's yellow on here in the CU 45 district highlighted here are residences. The bright pink is where the frat house is. The frat house does not belong. I know technically the CU 45 zoning is supposed to allow a fraternity or a sorority. However, fraternities and sororities in Tallahassee generally, first of all, are much closer to the university. Secondly, they're usually categorized as clubs, lodges, or union halls, some in central core zoning, and many in university transition zoning, not in CU 45. It is mostly residences around there. Like Nancy Taylor had earlier mentioned, her families lived across the street from there for ages. There's even residential use in the buildings behind some of the offices facing Tennessee Street. Honestly, I don't know why so much of this area is zoned to CU 45 and not office residential because this building that has been moved into by the fraternity was indeed an office building. It was a law office, and they had a little basement space for Morgan's dog training for quite a while. But yeah, it's a very quiet neighborhood. Yes, we do get through traffic during rush hours. We're used to that. But obviously, to the immediate east, it's residential preservation, too. And to the north of it, between, it's kind of a weird U shape, but East Call Street is residential preservation. I put lines through two of the houses there. They were built before 1900, one in 1887 and one in 1888. The one in 1888 was just sold. I was the listing agent. Lovely family with three children moved in. Bobby's absolutely right. We've had more and more families moving back in there as people age out of the neighborhood.
You have about 30 seconds.
Thank you. If anything, I propose that you do not approve this as anything other than a duplex, which is what the purchaser has applied for and developed it as, and not for use as a fraternity house, which is completely inappropriate for the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Maria Greco, then Fletcher Ditmore. Maria Greco is the next speaker.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Greco, 317 Mayberry Street. On August 23rd, during a meeting like this, our community came before you with a tone of desperation. I left with some hope, and I'm grateful that our mayor, commissioners, and city leaders listened, understood, and were now better informed on the issues on Pensacola Street. I'm here today in hopes that the proms expressed by our community and business representatives have given the city leaders the opportunity to create a plan through social planning, review of the Kearney Center, law enforcement, including TPD, Sheriff's Office, and FSU police, to immediately begin a strong presence in the areas that are prone to the illicit activities previously mentioned. I met today with the city planning department in regards to a new development to build affordable housing, but elected and appointed officials to take action. The property I want to develop is 329 Mayberry Street, one block from Pensacola Street, next door to the Mystic Woods condos, which I co-own and manage. The glimmer of hope to continue investing in this beautiful city came as I received reports from my tenants that in the past two weeks, there were improvements in our apartment complex, but they still noticed drug dealing, prostitution, trespassing, and other illicit activities continuing to plague the area, making it unsafe to walk outside our complex. The change will only come with a lot of efforts and funds from the city. We achieved success in our complex by adding double security and extra patrolling. We have quick response from our security company and zero hesitation from then dispatching officers when they receive a call for trespassing or suspicious activities. The tenants reports that they don't see TPD, Sheriff, or FSU patrolling. As business and community leaders are doing their part to keep our businesses and communities safer, we also bear the extra cost, responsibility, and hard work of our day-to-day operations running our business. The city has a responsibility, and we hope will invoke its powers to cooperatively coordinate redirecting and allocating funds for more police and social services. I highly recommend a long-term outlook and a solution to provide a secluded area of state or city-owned land with a permanent facility which will provide shelter, education, health facilities, including mental health care and rehabilitation for the homeless. A place to sleep and hang out in the heart of the university transition without the above mentioned has proven to be a failure. Drug dealers have become predators on the homeless, and they become the problem. It's immoral as a society not to take the above-mentioned actions and allow homelessness and hopelessness for a large percentage of those trapped in a system that isn't working. I implore you to do your part, as we have done our and found success. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Fletcher Ditmore, and then the next speaker will be Kristi Davis.
Hello.
Your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Fletcher Dilmour, 215 West College Avenue. Just want to thank you guys for taking the time to look into the West Pensacola Street problem and the crime in that area. Also, want to draw your attention to the gazebo at Lake Ella. I've been over there. It seems to be there's an encampment of unhoused individuals. I went on the State of Floris Sex Offender Registry and found that two sex offenders live there and one sexual predator. I can't imagine in any world that's ideal. If we can just take some action to remove them and make that park safe for citizens of Tallahassee to use, be greatly appreciated. Please take note of that. That's a pretty legitimate problem. Also, there's one sex offender living in the Myers Park as well. Just want to let y'all know about that. Thank you very much. Field the rest of my time.
Our next speaker, please.
Kristi Davis, she'll be followed by Lori Wilke.
Thanks for joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kristi Davis, and my address is exempt. Commissioners, you are hearing from a few of your firefighters and some family members tonight purely because they feel overlooked and unheard. The city was able to reach an agreement with the police in only a handful of negotiations while firefighters have met with the city going on 11 sessions and have seen little to no movement at all. They sent their representative up here to speak before you, which was met with disbelief by some of you. The sad truth is he was speaking of their actual experience. While you attempted to sum it up in one question, anyone who pays attention knows there is a rest of the story. From salaries and pension costs to the thousands of hours more in a career that they work over other first responders, it's easy to see why there has been an enormous drop in applicants to the department. How many other first responders must work a second job to pay their bills? How can you expect a new firefighter in this city to have a family and afford a place to live on the salary you provide? Just like the rest of the spouses, I have seen my husband's face when he comes home exhausted from fighting fires and running medical calls. I've seen how he sits with our daughters after shifts where he has to tell a parent that their child is dead. I've seen the worry he has for our kids after he has cut a teenager out of a car or had to perform CPR on a child that has taken their own life. Unlike the others, I've also had to see the look in his eyes when he had to tell our daughters that he had cancer, which is assumed by statute that he received thanks to this job. These men and women deserve to be treated as well as other first responders, and anyone who bothers to know the rest of the story can very well see that they have not. You have passion for the police department? Where's your passion for these firefighters? They deserve it just as much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Lori Wilke. Lori Wilke followed by TJ Roche.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lori Wilke. I live at 3700 Longchamp Circle. I have... I have been a resident and a voting resident of Tallahassee since 2001. So, thank you for your time here tonight. One of the firefighters over there is mine. The other men and women you see behind me have his back. That is why I'm here tonight on their behalf. I am also here on behalf of the other men and women that unfortunately cannot be here due to second job scheduling conflicts, a second job that is required in order to provide for their families. I will not stand here and spout facts, statistics, and percentages that compare this department's contract to like departments in the state, a contract they are attempting to negotiate to bring them to a fair wage, because you already know them and apparently have chosen to disregard, or this negotiation wouldn't be at a standstill. A standstill that exemplifies how this city leadership refuses to negotiate on a contract for some of its first responders. I'm curious, can any of you recite the six values that your position agreed to uphold on taking the seat as City Commissioner for the city of Tallahassee? Allow me to assist. Values: Honor public trust through ethical behavior; Provide exceptional citizen service; Lead with integrity at every level; Collaborate to reach common goals; Invest in employee excellence; Promote equity and celebrate diversity. Ladies and gentlemen, I ask this city leadership to reevaluate how they are currently holding true to these values that each of you agreed to uphold during your term. I am not an employee of the city of Tallahassee, therefore I do not fear retaliation, unfortunately like some of your firefighters do. Retaliation in job security; retaliation in due promotion when their performance calls for it; retaliation by not receiving a fair wage. Because of that, I can stand and speak the unfiltered truth that you have fallen behind at the fire department in compensation and staffing and the result is you have gone from one of the most competitive departments in the state to one of the least competitive. I encourage you to take a moment to realize that if the residents of this community truly understood what its first responders, employees of the city of Tallahassee, were having to fight for, the residents would take more action when it came time to vote. Your residents expect you to uphold your oath: Invest in employee excellence; Collaborate to reach common goals; And lead with integrity, so that your firefighters can continue to provide exceptional citizen service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is TJ Roche, and then Anna Marie Shealy.
Mr. Clerk, how many additional speakers?
Sorry, sir.
Including this speaker, seven plus two virtual.
Your name and address for the record, please.
TJ Roche, 2724 Bedford Way. Good afternoon, City Commissioners, Mayor Daley, and appointed officials. I stand here today a proud husband, a father of two, a homeowner, and I'm honored to be a City of Tallahassee firefighter and a licensed State of Florida paramedic. But before I was blessed with these opportunities, I'm a Tallahassee native. I'm a Sealy superstar, a raw ram, and a Leon lion. I have an associate's degree from TCC and a bachelor's degree from Florida State. And I'm here today to clarify and communicate the concerns of my brothers and sisters at the Tallahassee Fire Department. The first of these concerns of many is the take-home pay that we are provided. On paper, my $54,000 salary looks pretty good. However, after taxes and deductions, I bring home just over $33,000 a year to provide for my family. With inflation, the rising cost of goods, services, groceries, and gasoline, I'm ashamed to say I live paycheck to paycheck. At the end of the month, there's just nothing left. How is this possible? How can a first responder sworn to protect lives and preserve property live paycheck to paycheck? How can a licensed medical professional trained to recognize traumatic injuries and medical emergencies and provide immediate treatment live paycheck to paycheck? How can a firefighter who works an average of 53 hours a week and is trained to search and rescue victims and put out fires live paycheck to paycheck? Mind you, I am all three of those things that I just mentioned. My second concern is the recruitment and retention at Tallahassee Fire Department. Our department has seen a substantial decline in applicants and we have members leaving or seeking to leave at an alarming rate. At the last commission meeting, it was communicated that our department only has two vacancies. As it stands at this moment, that might be true. We are two vacancies away from being absolutely minimally staffed. Minimum staffing, in my opinion, is just a shade above inadequacy, if even at all. What if the schools we sent our children to were minimally supplied and minimally staffed? They would be inadequate.
You're at 30 seconds.
What if our doctors and nurses were minimally equipped and gave minimal effort? They would be inadequate. Inadequacy is unacceptable when it comes to public safety. There's a new station on the way and others are overdue to expand. We have to offer a competitive and livable wage to keep the capital city safe. Public safety is a priority. In closing, I'll say that growth and progress are reliant on change.
You're at three minutes.
Thank you.
You've all been put in this position to initiate change and promote growth and progress. The opportunity's here. What are you waiting for?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Anna Marie Shealy, followed by Joey Davis. Mayor Protem, would you like the speaker to begin?
I'm sorry. Give us your name and address for the record and you may begin. You have three minutes.
My name is Anna Marie Shealy and my address is exempt. Thank you guys for giving us your time and consideration today. My name is Anna Marie, as I said, and my husband is an engineer with TFD. I'm a native Tallahasian, born at TMH and raised in a home off of Lake Shore Drive. After graduating Leon High, I worked at a local restaurant throughout college and eventually served our community as a paramedic. My roots in this community run deep. I know when I married Ryan that I wasn't marrying just Ryan. I was marrying a firefighter and committing to the demands of my husband's job. Being a first responder myself, I knew all too intimately the long hours, the personal danger, the missed holidays, and the missed birthdays. I knew that I would become the default parent due to him working a minimum of 24 hours at a time and sometimes up to a week's on deployment. Being a first responder myself, I knew all too intem... Being a first res... I'm so sorry. I knew that there would be inequality in domestic labor when he would inevitably get mandatory to work. All these things I knew, but I never considered that I would be standing here today begging for a livable wage for my husband, my hero, and all of our city's firefighters. 10 years ago, I purchased our house on a server's wage. Today, we wouldn't be able to afford our same house on the wage that Ryan makes, even though he has been with TFD for 11 years and is an engineer. Recently, we considered moving, but with Ryan's salary, our only option would be not just to move out of Tallahassee, but to move out of Leon County altogether. Even though he has more than a decade of experience, his wages made it virtually impossible for us. Now imagine a newer firefighter with a young family. They wouldn't be able to consider living in a city that they serve. Mayor Daley, Commissioners, our firefighters do more than just put out fires. I know firsthand that I worked alongside them. These men and women don't always have a heads-up that a scene isn't safe. They're often calling for law enforcement to assist when a standard call becomes dangerous. But they are often still the first ones on the scene, putting themselves in danger. When a firefighter spouse chooses to start a family in Tallahassee, some of us are choosing to quit our own jobs or to put our jobs second every time. We are taking on more mental load when we are called and told, "I'm so sorry, my hands are tied. I got mandatory overtime." Bouses are the ones doing the last-minute shuffling of childcare, transportation to appointments, school, extracurricular activities. We are the ones explaining to friends, to parents, and to our kids, "I'm so sorry, sweet girl. Daddy will not be home until tomorrow night."
You have about 15 seconds.
"I know you're sad. I am too." A first responder has an innate spark that gets deep down in their bones and it never goes away. There is always a commitment to community, a priority of the job. But I want you to ask yourself, what kind of city do we have when the people who we rely on to save our lives and property can't afford to live here?
You're at three minutes.
Where is our priority as a city if not to support those who serve?
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Joey Davis. Joey Davis, and then Amy Holland.
Hello again. I'm Joey Davis, President of the Tallahassee Professional Firefighters, and my address is protected. After last minute's comments, questions, there are plenty of items that I'd consider bringing: Statistics, graphs, photos of pay stubs. You've heard about how hard our people are having it, their difficulty making ends meet and the struggles they face, that a firefighter brings home, a new firefighter brings home around $500 a week. What you haven't heard is that we have at least one firefighter on food stamps at the moment, that even the next month, due to trying to make them highly competitive over the last few years, our command staff will have averaged $30,000 of increase over the last few years. And in that same amount of time, our starting firefighter salary has gone up $770. And lastly, that in a recent poll of 190 of our firefighters, 31% are either considering leaving, have applied elsewhere, or are committed to leaving this department. Now, one of the firefighters here tonight was hired in from out of state in the last couple of years and is here in part because I sold him on the department. I told him about how hard we work, how we love serving the people of Tallahassee, and how the people of Tallahassee love us. Now he is here and struggling to support his young family. Should I apologize to him? In my email on my phone, I have a message from a retired New Jersey firefighter asking for info because his son's moved into the area and he wants to get a job with the department. Should I tell him we have a great department and great people here, but his son's going to have to commit to work a second job for at least several years in order to make ends meet? These shouldn't be questions that I have to ask myself. Mr. City Manager, I have stated our intention to work with you to resolve the situation, and I'll double down. For my part in leading to our poor relationship, I wholeheartedly apologize. We need to move forward. I will meet with you anytime if you're willing to help us get to where we need to be. These men and women and their families deserve that.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Amy Holland.
Now, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Amy Holland, and then Daniel McCoy.
Excuse me. Mr. Stevens, decorum. Or you may leave. Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. My name is Amy Holland and my husband is an engineer, a driver, with the Tallahassee Fire Department. My address is exempt per statute. Between the high cost of health insurance and high pension contributions, almost half of my husband's paycheck, it's gone before it ever even hits the bank. Due to this, my husband must work another full-time job. So what does that look like as far as spending time with family? Let's take a walk through one week. This is an average week. The average week has 168 hours. On average, my husband works 105 hours a week. That leaves us with, you know, just 63 hours. But hold on, you got to factor in sleeping and then driving to those two jobs, right? So then, on average, that puts him at about 20 hours to hopefully spend quality time with us. But remember, he has responsibilities at the house, you know, like cutting the grass because lord knows we can't afford a lawn care service. And then also, when he's home, he has to put on a smile and forget about what he dealt with when he was out there taking care of maybe your wife, your kids, your mom, on their worst day, and to come home and try to spend quality time with us. So if you have a family, I want to ask you a question. How many of those days in one week or those hours in one week do you get to spend with your family? As for my family, we get almost one day, 20 hours. So a person who has diligently worked for his fire department and his city to have to struggle so dang hard to pay his bills and make ends meet only to miss his two daughters growing up?
You have just a few seconds remaining.
Please, please help my family and the firefighters that you see here today and our whole firefighter family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Daniel McCoy, to be followed by Rebecca Folsom-McCoy.
Good evening. My name is Daniel McCoy. I've been an engineer and proud member of the Tallahassee Fire Department for 11 years. My family has a long history serving the city. I'm a proud fourth-generation firefighter in the city of Tallahassee. Son to engineer Randy McCoy, grandson to Lieutenant Malcolm McCoy Jr. and Captain James Swerengen, and great-grandson to firefighter Malcolm McCoy Sr. I'm here today to talk about a grave concern that faces my family every day. Like everyone else, we have bills to pay and they have to be paid. But for us, paying those bills can be a stressful proposition. I bring home less than $1,300 every two weeks. I proudly worked at the two busiest, at two of the busiest firehouses almost my entire career. My family, or for my family, a 53-hour work week isn't enough to meet our needs, so I'm faced to work another job. My wife currently works at our church. I teach my children the importance of hard work and dedication. I teach them about equality and fairness and how to treat others. Unfortunately, after so many years and so many calls, my family and I don't feel like that's being reciprocated. My take-home pay has not increased nearly enough to match inflation and overall increases in cost of living. Paying 18.69% into a pension plan and over $675,000 or $675 for health and life insurance, we're not left with very much. I'm very proud of the city of Tallahassee and the community at large. However, I don't believe it's too much to ask for better take-home pay for the people running calls and taking care of our community. The cost of pension and salary and take-home pay is far from being comparable to departments of similar size. I love this department, this city and county, but I believe we can do better. The budget spent on personnel is a weakness when compared to other departments of similar size. This leads to a problem we face with recruitment and retention. My own brother left the Tallahassee Fire Department and the city of Tallahassee for better pay elsewhere. My family and I, we bleed TFD. It's in my veins. It's been in my veins, or been in my family since before 1915 when my great-granddad was fighting fire on a horse and buggy. I'm simply asking him to bleed a little less.
All right, so, my husband is a firefighter, and he was born to be a firefighter. He's exceptionally proud to be a firefighter. He would probably correct me and say that he's actually an engineer-driver, and that's People should be able to work the careers that they were born to do, that they give blood, sweat, and tears for, and make ends meet. They should be able to have a professional job, and respectable job, that takes care of everybody in our communities, and not have to stress out, not have to work a second job like my husband does, and he has always had to work a second job. I work at our church, which is fine, but I also homeschool our daughters. And it's just, it's very important for the people who respond to emergency calls, give emergency medical care, that they are compensated, and that we can work and provide with the cost of living in Tallahassee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[670.93][670.93](APPLAUSE). Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, the only additional speaker I have who filled out a card in person, simply filled in as a name nobody, so I don't know who that would be or what the topic would be.
I'm sorry?
But I have a card that they, someone filled out with the name nobody. So, somebody goes by that name, I guess we have one more speaker?
Here's our speaker. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, like you said, my address is exempt. Okay. So, they say the difference between a flower and a weed is a judgment. I was really saddened by the way that we referred to and spoke about some of the issues that West Pensacola is facing. When you lose the ability to see a person's humanness, you can only see their beast. And unfortunately, some people have seen that, but there are two sides of that story, where there are businesses in that community that is hurting, there are also people that are on the streets, or people that are, that may be facing addiction or mental health illness that they need help with. And I've noticed over this time that we've seen increasing hostility towards these people that are disadvantaged or maybe seen as less than. The way these people are seen and treated is not going to help uplift them, and I think that should be the main priority of our city. We need to refocus and understand our elected officials work in collaboration with us to provide and establish equitable communities. We need to seek to rehabilitate and reintegrate these people into our society. In general, we need to seek to establish and promote growth. We don't get there by not acknowledging the pain and the struggle that these people are facing. If we have a goal of seeing more electric vehicles on the road, of seeing better improvements in our city, then we need to listen to people, such as the firepeople, who are coming in expressing their desire to get an equitable or fair wage. We don't begin to see them have better financial stability if we aren't hearing their concerns and getting them to a fair or decent wage. We all know that the cost of living is rising, so as we work, we need to become more capable, as Commissioner Porter said, of coming up with creative solutions that can both meet the businesses as well as the people that are in our communities, and also, as Commissioner Matlow said, to establish quantitative measures, and to establish percentages that we can meet, and to grow towards, to meet a fair or decent size of our community. We must develop rounded models that aren't black and white. We have to get away from models that are flat and that are just yes or no. It needs to be something that is equitable for everyone that is in our community.
You're at 30 seconds.
We can only implement what we ourselves. As we, we have to lead by example in this age of digitalization and automation, because as we do that, we can only put into effect what we have already thought. We need to build transparency and also be able to implement that in other AI tools so that we will be trustworthy of each other. Thank you.
Thank you.[887.31][887.31](APPLAUSE). Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Max Epstein. Max Epstein is no longer connected, I think, so Bethany Vickerman.
Bethany Vickerman and I've lived in the 500 block of East College Avenue for nearly 10 years. I want to bring your attention to the fraternity at 524 East College Avenue. As my neighbors have shared, beginning last Wednesday, there have been several nights where loud music has been played and could be heard at distances greater than 100 feet, which is a violation of the noise ordinance as our neighborhood is outside of the urban core. Historically, our neighborhood has been a very quiet one, particularly in the evenings. We've also noted that the added people and vehicles have created traffic and parking issues. East College Avenue has almost no street parking, and we've already observed several instances of illegal parking, blocked driveways, and the westbound lane of East College being blocked. Placing a fraternity in our neighborhood is truly a stark dichotomy to the nature and the tone of our neighborhood. I would greatly appreciate your attention to this matter and any further action that could be taken to ensure that the peace of our neighborhood is preserved. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, that's the last speaker that I'm aware of.
Okay. Commission discussion. Commissioner Porter, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'll just say I want to thank, thank all the speakers. We don't usually have so many speakers. I know it's been a long day for everyone. I want to thank you for hanging in there. I guess I'll start, Mr. City Manager, with the West Pensacola, the West End District. I know since our last meeting, we had a hurricane, a lot of, you know, we were probably behind, but I'm just wondering, what have we worked on since then? I know that Commissioner Williams-Cox, you've arranged a meeting, you know, do we have kind of an update on what's on the horizon?
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Mr. Manager.
Commissioner Porter, I think you hit the main point. Commissioner Williams-Cox has volunteered to take the lead, and a meeting is scheduled next Tuesday in the area. In addition, I think what was generally asked for was more resources in that area, and I think that, we talked a lot about that earlier tonight in the budget, we were asking for more resources. EPD, at this point, the officers spend more than 80% of their time in calls engaged, so there's not additional resources to redirect from other areas. We would be dependent upon new resources. So, I think we may headway on that tonight, and Chief Revel has already started to hire more officers in anticipation that we would get the green light to do that. So that's good news. I think we're looking forward to more resources beginning as early as next month. In addition, we have not met with the Kearney Center, but Rick Kearney has reached out to me. He's volunteered to meet with us, and we'll do that very shortly, I'm sure.
Commissioner Porter.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any plans to meet? Because one of the requests was, you know, some placemaking, some, you know, something with a stormwater pond, is, I assume, that's kind of a separate topic than the law enforcement piece, Commissioner Williams-Cox, is that correct? Or is that something you plan on discussing as well?
I don't know exactly what, everything that we will be discussing, that's why we're all coming together, the Sheriff's Office, Jennifer from SHS, we've also have Shinkton Lamy from the county, I don't know your title, Sileski. What's your title, Sileski? Chief of Staff, Sileski, will be meeting with us as well, and as of tonight, there have been some others who have expressed interest from the community, from the business community, to be a part of our discussion. And so, I'm going in with an open mind. I've met with Mr. Leonie and some of his office. I know what they have expressed their concerns to be. I'm going in to help us bring partners to the table, to let's talk about some potential solutions, whatever that may be. So I don't have an exhaustive list of what that is until we meet and are able to talk about it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, and I can send this in an email, I guess I was wondering if we could get some information about any placemaking opportunities? I know, this isn't the first time I've heard this from people for, what is the stormwater, the park over there on Lake Bradford? Or this, that's a separate thing. Do we have any plans for placemaking, I know that, in that area?
Commissioner.
I might need Assistant City Manager Tedder to help. The City Commission has designated five areas, if I'm not mistaken, as placemaking. It would take direction from the City Commission, this is not a staff-driven matter. Help me, those are very discreet areas that have already been identified. Any additional placemaking areas, so if you named a new district or something like that, would take commission effort. Wayne, help me with the details.
Absolutely. So Commissioners, as you're aware, we had, as the City Manager indicated, we had five placemaking areas identified by the City Commission, probably about eight to 10 years ago, as part of our implementation efforts that was put into our blueprint, updated blueprint process, so we had a funding mechanism to get those tasks accomplished. I will say that, in the meantime, without any direction from the City Commission, there are things that staff has done to help in this area. We've modified our comp plan policies, our land use maps, that are consistent with the vision of having a district out there. We've identified a boundary, we've identified, we've actually provided concepts for signage that could be done on individual properties. We have done zoning changes. We've even sold land to the Leonies to make more of that placemaking, the multimodal district in place. And I think probably specifically related to sidewalks and the kind of gateway features, West Pensacola Street is a FDOT roadway. And one of the most difficult things that we've had is to blend our local standards with a state standard. And what we've done, we've done two parts for that. First of all, we've worked with them to address what they call a context classification map, so every one of their corridors have this context classification. In the past, they did not have the correct classification along this corridor, so staff has worked with DOT, they have agreed to those classifications. And what that means is, when we are doing projects, we can do what we call a complete street. In the right areas, where the right density and intensity, we can require wider sidewalk. Now, the second part of that is, when you get to the local-level DOT folks, it is inconsistent with their typical policies. They don't typically have a six-foot-wide landscaped area, and then the sidewalk, and a wide sidewalk. So that we have also worked with DOT, where now they will individually approve site by site exactly what is allowed in our land development code for that sidewalk width. So we've done a lot. I think there was a mention about a stormwater component. I received something from the group probably about a week ago, a week ago. To be honest with you, I haven't had a whole lot of time to look at it until this afternoon. And one of the areas they pointed out for a potential regional facility is owned by Leon County School Board. What I looked up today is who's using the property. There has been, the map identifies, it's the Bellevue Sports Field area. I don't know if that's still in active use or not, but it's something that is owned by the school board and operated by the school board. But probably more significant on that site, it looks like FSU has a Carnegie Arts Center of some sort. I've got on their webpage and looked at it, and the webpage from FSU says they recently remodeled about a 30,000-square-foot building for this arts complex, and it provides some details about what's in it. That tells me there's probably a long-term lease deal between the university and the school board, and I don't have those details. And if that is the case, and there's been a whole lot of money expended by FSU on that building, it would probably render that site not very capable for a regional-type facility. That's kind of a nutshell of what we've done in the past. We've done an awful lot to try to get some of these placemaking things done, but there's never been a direction by the City Commission to say, "Let's make it a placemaking area." But comes that, it's going to be cost, and we all have to be prepared to identify how we're going to pay for things that come out of these placemaking efforts. And so I do caution you that there's going to be a second component if that happens.
Commissioner Porter, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the direction is clear generally, we want to, you know, I think we all want to stay engaged on this issue and get updates as we have more meetings. I would like to make a motion for an item to come back with a little bit more detail about the area and our placemaking initiatives, and what it would look like to designate that area a placemaking district.
Motion on the table, and bring back the West End placemaking agenda item, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any further discussion on the motion?
I'm not, I'm not sure, where did Wayne go? I'm not clear, and I guess, you know, bringing an agenda item back is not a problem, but I just heard you say it's going to require money.
That's how all of these placemaking initiatives start, is come up with the ideas, work with the community, and I've not seen one that hasn't came back with some sort of cost to it. And we don't know what's going to be required, so I can't give you a range, but when you have the community input and they're telling you what they want in their area, it's going to generate a cost that you're going to have to reconcile.
Commissioner Porter, I'll support your motion to bring agenda item back. I want you to know that I am solely focused, though, on the public safety element, the trash element, the environmental element, and how do we live together on the West End corridor, which I think is at the root of some of our issues out there, first and foremost, and then moving forward with the placemaking. But I'd be interested in seeing what the agenda item looked like.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Commissioner Porter, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know some folks have trickled out from the Magnolia Heights Franklin Boulevard area, I, and some of them, they're my neighbors. I live on North Franklin Boulevard. One of the speakers, his dog was lost on New Year's. I helped, I didn't really do that much to help, but I did try to help, but he found his dog, so, all good. But I know that an email was sent out, and I was wondering, so, you know, what are the next steps, and what is possible for us to do, given the, you know, the CU45 designation? Like, you know, what are the next steps? What, is there anything that we can do? Is there an inconsistency with, you know, the permitting, the, just an update, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
John is the most informed, and I think actually the speakers from the neighborhood are very well-informed, in fact, I think describe the issue extremely well. The zoning does allow for a fraternity, believe it or not, it does. Now, it's a high bar, it's not just simply you can move into a house, and so I think there's some nuance to this. I think John can tell us where we are relative to the permit, its status, what we know today, which is different than we understood at the permit, and the next steps. It's complicated, I will tell you that. It could involve code enforcement, it clearly will involve law enforcement, and then there's the growth management piece of it. So there's a lot of layers, but I don't, I think the neighborhood even understood that it is possible
Right, right.
that that is allowable use. So John, if you'll give us a little deeper background, I think that's helpful for everybody.
Sure, and as the City Manager said, I think a lot of the speakers did well to inform themselves on this, and have stayed very engaged with us. Where we're at now is, so they've applied, been issued a permit to convert it into just a residential structure, and are still in the process of doing upgrades to the structure to make it habitable. Where we're at now with the new information of their intended use for the property is, we're holding that certificate of occupancy until we have more information on what they intend to do, how frequently they intend to use it for activities, things like that. inform themselves on this and have stayed very engaged with us. Where we're at now is, so they've applied, been issued a permit to convert it into just a residential structure and are still in the process of doing upgrades to the structure to make it habitable. Where we're at now with the new information of their intended use for the property is we're holding that certificate of occupancy until we have more information on what they intend to do, how frequently they intend to use it for activities, things like that, that a fraternity is normally engaged in, and identifying things if they require additional parking to be provided or any other site improvements that may be necessary for it to actually be a fraternity versus just a two-unit residential structure. There are other elements that go into it. I know we're working closely with Tallahassee Fire Department on any additional improvements to the structure, depending on how they use it. For example, their expressed intent is to only have a limited number of occupants in the building. If we confirm that they'll have over a certain threshold of people living there, then it would require additional upgrades to basically the sprinkler system having put in. And so we're basically holding their certificate of occupancy where they can't officially have, move in and inhabit it until we get all this additional information. And we're keeping, as we get information, we're keeping everyone who's reached out to us engaged.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, you know, I want to thank the firefighters and their families for coming out tonight and for your service. And, you know, I don't even know what to say. I mean, frankly, I'm just ashamed of this process and our city's role in it. And, you know, I want to personally apologize because no matter the disagreement or the issue, all residents should be treated with dignity and all people, but especially our first responders and our city employees. And so I want to make it clear where I stand that we need to bargain in good faith. And if we have the resources to support the staff that we have at the city and in our police department and paying them a living wage, y'all deserve the same. And, you know, I just want to make it clear that my position is that we move forward and that we actually bargain and come to a resolution on this issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to all the speakers for coming out tonight. Pensacola Street, I listened to the county meeting last night. And there isn't a solution that's not going to cost money. I mean, we're going to have to come to the table to figure out what that is. I mean, whether it's, you know, housing, social services, law enforcement, placemaking, whatever we do, it's going to require public investment. There's no magic wand we can wave to solve some of the issues that the residents and the businesses are facing. So I think we need to be prepared to have that conversation when we move forward. Call Street sounds a lot like the complaints we received about CityWalk, as far as the type of housing units, the violations of laws from noise complaints. I mean, it sounds like a very similar situation to me. And I would say, while zoning may be allowed for certain uses, nobody's zone to be able to violate our noise ordinance. Nobody's zone to be able to violate our parking ordinance. We need to make sure we're enforcing what we already do have in place. And then lastly, on the firefighters issue, I think, I mean, we talk a lot about the city of Tallahassee being a family. And what I heard tonight is the family's hurting. And we've heard the positions from the firefighters, but we haven't heard from our City Manager. We need to hear from you as Commissioners, but that's executive session or individually. But we need to have this conversation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to say, I want to thank Mr. Leone for his leadership in getting the conversation started about the issues on West Pensacola. I'm in that area a lot, and I see what's going on with the homeless population, especially when the Kearney Center. Well, and I understand that Kearney Center is open during the day and they can be there during the day. That was one of the correspondences that we got. But I think most people do leave during the day and they hang out on the corners and at the businesses. But it's not just the homeless. It's others who prey on the homeless people in that area. But I agree, there are things that we have to do. We've heard the impact that it's had on viable businesses in that area, especially the apartment complexes where they're having a difficult time renting or leasing their apartments because of a lot of the crime that's going on in the area and the vagrancy. And so I agree that there are things that need to be done and as quickly as possible. And I have full faith and confidence in our mayor, Pro Tim, that she will lead that effort and bring us something back that all of us can agree on. But the challenge is going to be where the funding is going to come from. But I think if all of us are committed to making that happen, we can make it happen. The Call Street issue, you know, I just, I can't imagine, you know, a residential neighborhood like that being impacted by a fraternity house. And I see what happens on the other end of College Avenue, west of downtown. And I can't imagine that going on, imagine that going on in a neighborhood, even if we are enforcing. You know, we've had the same conversation about, well, pot bellies out because they were front and center with some of the sound issues that we had and the police having to be called several times. And as soon as they turn the corner, the music is cranked up again. And I just don't want to see families and those who we are encouraging to live in our downtown area as we work to build that 18-hour downtown, that they not have to be subject to that kind of disturbance, be it parties or parking, trash, or anything like that, because they are families and own properties. And I think we owe them that. In terms of the firefighters, I had a very good luncheon meeting with them on yesterday. As I told them, I am from a labor family. My wife worked for the teachers' union as part of their legal staff for 18 years. I was a member of the United Faculty of Florida for a term. And so I understand that process and what they're asking for. We are family here in Tallahassee. I am proud of all of the employees, as I mentioned earlier, with the recognition for our United Way campaign. We have a tremendous staff. And I think we owe it to all of them to make sure, especially, that they are earning the wage that it takes for them to support themselves and a family. And so I hope that I would encourage, as we go through the collective bargaining process, and we can't obfuscate that process. It is a legal process that we have to go through. But we can certainly indicate what our desires are in that respect and hope that those will be adhered to as that process continues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. The hour is far spent. We've been here a long time, but it is where we choose to be because this is what we agreed to do to serve our residents. I am pleased and proud to serve and represent and happy to work with whomever I can to make things happen for the good of our city. But we've got to protect our city. We've got to take care of our city and those who live there within. So thank you to all the speakers who came out to let us know the areas where we have some opportunities to be great. We have some opportunities to be greater. So I'm looking forward to working with West Pensacola, just like I've worked with Southside. I've worked with whatever side of town needs, you know, needs to work. I'm happy to do it. Can't make any promises, but one thing is for sure, the journey of a thousand miles starts with the first step. And so we're going to step out on faith on Tuesday, and we're going to meet at Leon County Sheriff's Office. And I want to thank Sheriff Walt McNeil and Chief of Staff Sileski and everyone who's coming to the table to let's put our heads together and let's try to fix what needs to be fixed. And of course, if we, you know, need to call in others, we will also do that. Tonight, we've done some, I think we've done some good work because we are on our way to getting our budget, a balanced budget passed. Because no matter what we think about it, nothing happens unless you're able to have the resources to do what you need to do. And so having those additional officers is not a scam. Having additional officers is necessary. And if you don't think that it's necessary, let something happen in this city like it happens in other cities. And, you know, I have people telling me all the time, we don't want to become Portland. We don't want to become San Francisco. But a way for that to happen is that we all have to do our part. We all have to pull the wagon. I want to mention that on Saturday is Ken Riley Day. And for those of you who don't know, Coach Ken Riley is a Hall of Famer now, although he's in glory. He was inducted into the Hall of Fame. He was the beloved football player of, from Florida A&amp;M, who played with the Cincinnati Bengals for a number of years and came back to Tallahassee and coached at FAMU. And so on Saturday, I'll be joining the mayor to do a proclamation at halftime. I'm really proud of that and glad to be able to do that. I also want to say, go Noles. I'm very proud of what our Florida State Seminoles are doing. And this is football season. This is a football town. This football is, I heard somebody say, football in the South is a religion. But in Tallahassee, it's a super religion. But what is important is that when our teams and our folks do well, the city does well economically and has a great reputation. It doesn't mean that we don't have things that we need to fix, you know, like College Avenue and what have you. But we do have some things that we need to fix. But we also want to just know that we should support our young people as they matriculate through college and as they bring good news and notoriety to us. Unfortunately, sometimes we have some things that happen in our community that we just cannot control. I got a call earlier today that Riley Elementary was on lockdown because of some situation that was happening near the school. This is where the city of Tallahassee, Tallahassee Police Department, Leon County Schools, we all work together to make sure that our children are safe. And you saw during the storm, I'm so proud of what our city did with the storm because I drove down I-10 going to Orlando. And it looked like in Jefferson, Madison, along I-10 corridor, it looked like Little Michael that come through and just snapped trees and, I mean, just really, really bad. And I have friends who are in Perry who told me how bad things looked over there. But thank you to our team, the whole city family for making it happen. And fortunately, we didn't get hit as bad as it had been anticipated. But what I like about it is I read that the storm stopped intensifying when it got close to Tallahassee, and then it kind of twisted out a different way. So I believe that we're doing the things, we didn't do anything to stop the storm from coming other than probably praying. I know I was. But we definitely want to make sure that we recognize that it could have been a lot worse. So thank you to everyone who played a part in putting our city back together. And let's just continue to try to work together to keep moving our city forward. Very proud of this city. And just like in a family, we don't always agree, but we are family. And we figure out how to do what we need to do and keep it moving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you finish up, could I make one other announcement?
Please.
Because I think it's certainly important. Today at the United Way Luncheon, Bernice Cox mentioned that they were going to assemble, I guess, a community summit, if you will, to discuss the issue of housing and housing affordability in our community. And they are going to bring together partners from the federal down to the local level. And she has asked me to be a part of that because of my interest in affordable housing in our community. That's one of the things that was a priority of mine when I came to the Commission and I worked to get South City in the CRA district, which helped them to get funding to begin to redevelop the Orange Avenue apartment complex. And of course, it assisted in us being able to attract the Echoes Magnolia Oaks property that we did the ribbon cutting for yesterday. And so that will be, I think it's sometime in October. I don't have the exact date on that, but I'll try to get everybody the information as Bernice distributes it. But it's coming up pretty soon. And so we'll have an opportunity from a general perspective and going forward, how to address the affordability of housing in our community and especially for those at 60% to 30% AMI, which is low and very low-income housing in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the indulgence.
Absolutely. I have several things. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. Mr. Manager, I am anxiously awaiting our game plan in action on Pensacola Street. So I, number one, I would love to see us get out there and physically clean it up. It is too dirty. We do need to get the trash up. I am very interested in the conversation with the shelter and see what the status is. At the last meeting, I asked for an update on the analysis of the original agreed-upon plan between the Kearney Center, the city, and the county. And I am looking forward to, I understand, storm hit. We had two, two storm hits, and we had to concentrate. But I am extremely interested in knowing the status of that relationship and what is our game plan moving forward with law enforcement on the West End as well. I will be the first to go on the record. It is absolutely absurd to have a fraternity on College Avenue, and it needs to be stopped immediately. The difference between that side of College Avenue and the other side of College Avenue, the other side of College Avenue is university transition. We expect fraternity houses to be on that side. You cannot have a fraternity house in the middle of a residential area. It's not going to work. I don't quite understand, to be honest with you, I'm looking at, I'm looking for John. I don't understand how they can even have parties if they don't have a CO. Shut it down. That's my opinion. Let them go through the process. They're trying to get their CO and everything. And I know it's complicated, and I know it's detailed. And I know it's very easy for me just to sit up here and say, shut it down. But I do not understand how you can have massive parties at a place that you do not have a CO, let alone block the traffic, let alone have the party bus and disrupt the entire neighborhood. I am interested in expediting every creative measure that is needed from city staff to make sure that we can rectify this situation ASAP and move forward in a more permanent solution so that this does not happen. You cannot have a fraternity house on College Avenue right there. That's my piece.
East College.
East College Avenue, excuse me. Magnolia Oaks was fantastic yesterday.
Yes.
And I was so pleased to be there to help cut the ribbon. I mean, I know these decisions can be controversial and split, but that was an incredible showcase of how the private industry, the CRA, the city came together. It's an apartment, for those of you that aren't familiar, it's an apartment complex that is 100% affordable housing.
Yes.
And it's beautiful. It's gorgeous with the pool, with the gym, with the clubhouse, 110 units. And this is truly how we move forward in this community. And we need to do everything we can to encourage more of that type of private development.
Sure.
And it was just an honor and a privilege to be there.
Transition.
Yes, they've set aside apartment, yeah, nearly a tenth of the entire complex is set aside for those that are transitioning that need permanent housing. And it was very exciting. On the flip side, tomorrow, we are cutting the ribbon on the Amazon Center. And it's the grand opening.
Here, here.
And this is something that we've been working on for years. And it's a very exciting day in Tallahassee. And I'm looking forward to celebrating with each and every one of you at that event. I, too, want to chime in. Fall is a wonderful time to be in Tallahassee. And kudos to Florida State for the start of a great season. Kudos to FAMU for the start of a great season. And I am honored and looking forward to being at the game, the first home game of the year at FAMU for Ken Riley Day. That is going to be a very, very special event. And I just can't wait. It's going to be wonderful. Mr. Manager, once again, in closing, I want to thank you and the budget team for all the hard work and for everything that the team does. To be able to put together a $1.2 billion budget with 14 different funds for a size, I mean, this is our size, is extremely difficult. And I can't tattle enough, we have a nationally recognized, award-winning budget office. And I can't tell it enough, we have a nationally recognized, award-winning budget office that this is all they do, year-round, round the clock, and they do it really well. And I just really appreciate their hard work and their dedication. And in closing as well, the response to the hurricane and the storm last week was phenomenal. Always room for growth, always learned, room to learn. And I know that after every storm event, we do an after-action report or a thought process, and we, we always act how we can do better. We always try to figure out how we can do better. I'm sorry, I'm tired. But I got to tell you, it's, the, the city really responded positively, and we appreciate it. Also saying that, knowing that we still have two more months of hurricane season. But with that, I hope everyone has a wonderful night, and we stand adjourned.